To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull anything off of the calendar? If you want to talk about it, pull it off.
I'd like to talk about an item.
Okay, which item?
Item B.
B, okay.
The Silverstaff report and Billy's report.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm looking for my notes, I think I might have had something.
I've got a couple of them.
Which item?
The iPad page twenty-two and-
What item?
Twenty-three. They're leak history and-
Is that your reports?
Yeah.
Okay, B, okay. Anybody else besides B? I'll entertain a motion to approve all items except B.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exclusion of item B. Who said D or B?
B.
B, thank you.
Can you entertain a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar without item B, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass as five-oh. Okay, item B, let's go right to that.
Yes, I just have a couple of questions. First off, I'd like to compliment the staff reports, I thought they were very thorough. But on iPad page twenty-four, iPad twenty-four, go down to the B reservoir replacement project, and it talks about a $500,000 planning. Now, that was just an application, wasn't it?
Jim's report.
Yeah, I was just wondering how that is going.
Twenty-four.
We've heard nothing.
We didn't commit to $500,000, we committed to have you, Jim, looking at it straight. And B reservoir is the one that has the tarp over the top of it, I call it the tarp.
Yep. That's okay.
Which we someday need to build a new tank there or something.
Yes. And we have gotten, we've got our application in, they have all the data, and we have no information.
And then, one more item on here. It's on iPad twenty-five, it's a picture of pump station number two. Jim, is that the one that you put that package together for Murphy switches for?
Yes, that's the, the red is the new control panel.
Which is the Murphy switches?
Right.
That you did such a great job, and I compliment you. They're all up and working now, basically.
We did have to replace the governor recently, we got to suffer from this.
You had to replace the governor? You had to replace the governor? Or the engine? If you hadn't had the iPad, thought the iPad, that's why I look here. If you hadn't had the Murphy switches, could there possibly have been damage to the engine because of the other?
No.
Well, sometimes that happens, the governor cuts loose and they'll go fast enough to get scatter parts all over the pump. That's just the only two things I had, but I have no information, sir.
Bill, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a few.
Okay, give us the page number.
Page twenty-two. On leak detections and leak history. In 2011, we had eighty-seven leaks, 2012, hundred-and-sixteen. So far, for 2013, is this, is this on the calendar year or the fiscal year?
Calendar.
Calendar. So we had a hundred-and-two leaks. I just, I'm glad, later on in the thing, we'll talk about the leak detection service, but, and I assume we're gonna check all the pipe systems, but I'll wait till that comes out.
Actually, that was in, actually, that's in the consent calendar, so we won't be probably talking about it.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Yeah, we approved the leak detection service.
In the consent, oh, okay, well, then I'll comment on it, you know? Because this is, you can see what they've done in the pass on the leak detection and the little rectangle in the thing, you know, I think it's awfully important. I'm just hoping they go through all the pipes, because the biggest failure we had recently is gonna, was it a cement, steel cement?
Cement mortar-lined.
Huh?
Cement mortar-lined.
Yeah, and have we been checking those for leaks?
Uh, we get, we pick up some of them just because of the way the process works, and Keith is including some of the higher-risk ones of those pipes.
So we are looking at some of the others?
But not all of them.
That was not a previous leak, though, that we detected, that was just a fluke, just blew, water pressure.
Yeah, whether they would have found it or not, hard to say.
But I don't, I don't think we've been testing those lines, that's all.
Anything else, Bill?
Yeah, I'll flip the pages, I just did this this afternoon, so, yeah, earmarked them to try to find them. I was curious about the water treatment plant, the averages between the years, I think it's important, because of the drought.
Page?
You're gonna start about, it's page twenty-nine. Treat, production comparisons, monthly maximum and minimum average, I don't think we've had, have we had this before, Jim, or has this been something you just produced?
You've had this before.
Yeah.
I removed some of the previous years, that's why it looks easier to read than it was before.
Cleaned it up.
But this, this is a summary of year-end results, so that's why I put the five-year average information up there.
Then the next page is thirty, just turn it over, and this, any water treatment figures, again, this is a five-year average. But I went back to the leaks page, and we're losing five-and-a-half percent, which, if I did my math right, five-and-a-half percent of twenty-one thirty-two million, that's millions of gallons annual production, that we're losing a hundred-and-eighteen million gallons, almost a hundred-and-nineteen million gallons due to leak. I know everybody tells me the leak percentage is low, and we should be satisfied with our old pipes and need for conservation. I'm glad we're doing the testing and we're getting back to repairing pipes, hopefully, and laying new ones. And then the lake comparison, that's an annual year again, and we've had another three years in a row with really good participation. Didn't get much bigger than what it was previous year.
Well, it was good that we raised the rates a little bit, it's good that it didn't fall off like they said it was gonna do.
Yeah, the next page would be thirty-three, and it refers to the percentage of lost water in the district, unaccounted for percentages. And I used. Then on page thirty-five, this is the monthly billing report. Down at the bottom has past due billing, and by years. And in 2010, it was less than a half a million, and now, 2011, over a million, a million and a third the last two years on past due billing. And hopefully, that will go down as the economy gets better.
That'll, that'll, should go down based on the change of our billing procedures that are gonna be in-
That'll, in itself, will take it down.
This was due to monthly billing, 'cause it's past due billing, not delinquent bills.
Well, did we, when did we change the monthly billing?
We've changed in 2012, I think, January of 2012?
January of 2012, yeah.
Yeah.
We started monthly billing right away, so it was May of 2011.
May of 2011.
When we started monthly billing.
Oh, yes.
The rates didn't increase till twelve.
That's right.
See, I've got another here, dog, here for something. I already mentioned that? Jeez, look at that. All the way to George's report.
Okay.
Ken? December, it's December.
Do you have any?
No, I did not.
Okay, I entertain a motion. To accept the reports.
I shall move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as five-oh. Okay, public participation. Individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for public comment or agenda items, on agenda items, will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board, with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. You'll be given a time to speak, and after I close that and bring it to the board, then that'll be it. So be sure to get your comments and questions in when I have it open to the floor, okay? Okay, uh, next item is-
All right.
Does somebody want to speak?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Oh, okay, I didn't see a hand.
I'm sorry, I was tricked, there was a few.
Okay, this is the time.
Good evening, and my name is Roger Cohn, for the record, I'm a resident of Folsom, California. I'm also, as many of you know here, I've been the project manager on the process water, recycle water project, excuse me, at the water treatment plant. And I'm here to formally let the board know, as I've let George know here late last week, that I will not be working at Lee and Rowe here come the end of this week. I've accepted a position for the city of Folsom, which is where I live, and sort of presents a unique opportunity for me. At the same time, it's bittersweet, because I've really enjoyed working with the board and with the district staff and operations and everything on the project. But, as it is, I've brought with me here tonight three members of our transition team, and, if you like, or I'll turn it over to them here shortly, but, first is Don Lee, Don is one of the namesake founders of Lee and Rowe. So he'll be supporting us on a technical role. Charles Rowe is the son of the other namesake of the company and principal with the company. And then James Pollak has been my, I'll say, right-hand man ever since I've been working here in Sacramento. James is located in Sacramento, and will be assuming the day-to-day responsibilities as project manager interfacing directly with George and with staff here through the remainder of the project. So, without further ado, I, again, I just would like to thank everybody for your support and on this project, and how much I've enjoyed working with that. And with that, I was gonna turn it over briefly to Charles, if that's all right.
Good evening, everyone, it's a privilege to work for the district. I'm here to affirm our commitment to the successful completion of this job is the first priority for us. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve you guys, and we'll be looking to work closely with George and Jim and the operators in the districts and the board as well, so. James would just like to introduce himself.
My name is James Pollak, as Roger mentioned, I've been shadowing him in the background, lurking in the background, assisting with the project currently underway, so I'm excited about the opportunity to keep moving forward, so, thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure the staff was aware of this.
Well, we found out late after the agenda had been set.
Oh, you just found out?
So, I invited him to come up and speak to you during public participation, so it was too late to put an agenda item on to discuss it further.
And are they scheduled to become before us?
We're waiting for the wetlands evaluation. They're, they're kind of buttoning up the evaluation of the alternatives you've seen before, but I didn't think it was worth bringing forward to the full board until we had that wetlands evaluation as part of it. So, soon as we can get that report, sooner the better out of them, then we'll be scheduling a special board meeting to just discuss the project.
Okay, anybody else who'd like to speak to something that isn't on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing nothing, I'll move, come back to committee reports.
I think we'd like to, as the board, we'd like to thank Roger for all his help, I think I speak for everybody on the board, he's been-
He was the president last year, so.
Had great information for us, and has been very, very helpful in our projects, past and present, so we'd just like to thank you. We appreciate you guys, and look forward to doing business with you in the future. Good luck on your new endeavor.
Thank you very much.
Committee reports. Butte County Local Agency Formation Commission, which is mine, we met on the, thanks for coming.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, we met on the fifth, fifth of- We met on the- When did we meet on the, picked up the wrong agenda? We met on the ninth of January in Oroville, and we had two more sewers that were not in the entity from Chico approved, one at a time. And we're, Chico has asked for an extension on our demand to do something about the sixty-two units, and we've told them that we're not going to give it to them free like they want us to, because that would be taking out of the pockets of the members. And then we had an evaluation of the executive officer, and every, we haven't gotten the official thing, but it did, it looks like everyone is well, at least with Steve's performance. That's all we did.
Larry, is Chico paying full annexation fees for those properties?
Is Chico?
Yeah, the islands, the sewer-
They're not annexing. We're just giving them permission to go outside of there.
Gotcha.
And they're not annexing, we're trying to get them to annex, but they're, they're fighting it because they say they can't afford it. But they, the new study just came up and says that it would only cost them $4,000 a year if they annexed the islands. And they were thinking it was gonna be like $20,000. And the ironic thing is, they just, the study that they just did to come up with the $4,000, cost $22,000. So they could have done it for five years, but the county did pay for that, so they're glad. No, this is a re-study. Hopefully, there won't be. Okay, the next one is the Butte County Special District Association, Ken?
When are we gonna terminate this?
It was, it was December. It was December, but it was right after the last week that we had it early. Back then, it was on the same day.
That's why I was confused on this. Uh, anyhow, we did have the meeting, the three of us went, our general manager, myself, and Larry, Larry, of course, representing Lafco at that meeting. And we did a good job of not getting George drafted as, as president of the Butte County-
So then I didn't have to resign.
Yeah, we, we gave them the ultimatum and told them what our terms were. And as a matter of fact, then we got the cooperation, and we nominated Mike Trinka to take over the leadership role for this year. And I think he's looking forward to it, he's got a big drum that he can bang with his successes as the, with the ice rink, and he's energetic and looking forward to, to leading that in this coming year. There was really very little other business that we, we handled. I think we approved the previous minutes in the budget, but it's pretty simple stuff. And that was all that really went in, went on in that meeting.
Okay, water conservation, that is Fletcher's chairperson.
Yes, we met on the seventh of the month. Had several items of business, but the two main ones that we discussed was the vegetable, the demonstration vegetable garden, kind of an update on it, and the credit, the cover crop is growing. That little bit of a shower that we had since the seventh is enough to help it along, and I haven't walked it since then. Ward's group planted daffodils around the post rocks, a hundred thousand, whoops?
One thousand.
One thousand, where did I get a hundred thousand? But anyway, one thousand, and they're gonna look beautiful when they come up. Was that enough rain, do you think, to get them started?
They are, other parts of the town, not yet.
Not yet, okay, well, anyway, and of course, the question is always brought up, what if the drought continues? And if the drought continues, it would be my suggestion to, we'll mow whatever's there and work it up and follow it, that's the term in agriculture, it's called follow, and we'll just wait and plant another crop next year if we want to continue doing it. And there'll be a lot of ag ground followed this year in the valley, a lot of ag ground followed, which means it'll be just at the disc stage or different type of toolage practices on it. And then the big thing that we discussed was our irrigation workshop scheduled for February the twenty-seventh. We now have all of the major players, which we were going after, plus some in our district that are part of it, as was I talked to both at the meeting, which is primary, the Frederick Hospital and the cemetery were the two that showed. Remember, we sent out an email reminding about the meeting this close to the holidays, and a couple of them probably forgot. But they touched bases with us, they're gonna be doing it.
Mike Trinka called with his apology, he missed that part of the letter, he'll be at the next meeting.
Kind of like doctors and quite, you know, they call you two or three times to make sure you haven't forgotten, even if you're on the deathbed, they still call you to make sure that you're gonna be there. Well, we didn't call anybody, I talked to George, and I said, well, let's just wait and see who shows up. Yeah, but, and we've got a lot of vendors in line, it's gonna be a half a day workshops here, starting with the lunch, and it's gonna be quite well-accepted. And remember, we started planning on doing this irrigation workshop for Wise Water Use, where the reservoir was still spilling. It wasn't in a drought situation, of course, like George says, we're always in a drought, but that's very true. And I've got a lot of comments on it, almost on a daily basis, and it's gonna involve master gardeners and a whole group of knowledgeable individuals on that. And we have a couple of our members here, would you like to say anything about the meeting?
When do you sign up?
Huh?
Do I sign up, okay?
You're already signed up. Ward, how about this?
Oh, okay, good, I'll be there. George, do you have anything you'd like to cover?
Oh, he's covered it. Sepp?
No, I think I covered it, yeah.
I was working around, I was working around.
Yeah, okay. Okay, administration and personnel committee with chairperson.
We met on January eighth, discussed the items that are later agenda items. We went through the, the sections of the policy that we were wanting to look at in regard to billing, and our, you'll get our recommendation and more detailed information when it comes up on the agenda. Basically, we're saying abandon the old policy and effectuate the new policy. We talked about, we went over Kevin's contract, was the other agenda item on there, and committee will have a recommendation at the time when we get to it in the year.
Sepp, anything?
I've pretty much covered it, and we're gonna, we're gonna have some more to say when, when we get to those agenda items.
Okay, so now is the time to appoint committee members for 2013. George said if I, if I want to increase my paycheck, all I have to do is put myself on all the committees.
Up to six, right?
Up to six.
Okay, well, I didn't, I really didn't do that, but I, here's what I, is there anyone want to talk to me about it before I do?
I'd like to stay on the committees that I'm on currently right now, and-
Okay, you may not, but-
I know.
Pretty clear.
But, yeah, anything else, anybody else want to say anything before?
I'd like to be appointed to all the committees.
That would make it easy, huh? Any comment? No comment? None of you have one that you really want to be on?
Yeah, I do.
Which one do you want to really be on?
Water supply.
That's also one for me.
That's the only one?
Well, no, I mean, I-
That's the main one, okay.
I've always been-
I don't know if you did it or not, I've got it all written down here.
I, I like finance, I like water supply, I should have gone to the page so I could flip over and see what they were on the back.
Okay, well, here's what I've got.
You already have it anyhow.
Yeah, right, I just seen if you wanted any input. Okay, standing committees, administration and personnel, that is remaining the same. Ken Hunt and Sepp Carolla. Finance, with Ken being the chairperson. And finance is staying the same, it's Larry Duncan, chairperson, and Ken Hunt. Paradise Lake Recreation, um, what are your feelings about that?
I mean, I got to experience it for years, I, I can stay on it, I don't have any real strong feelings about it.
Right, what about you, Doug?
I'm fine with it.
Right. Okay, well, I want to be back, honestly.
That's what I figured, so I wasn't gonna stand in the way.
Okay, so, so I guess then I'm going to make myself the chairperson of that, and make Doug the second person.
Good.
Okay, and then on the community relations, we're going to have that as Ken Hunt and Bill Kellogg, and I'm changing the chairperson to Ken Hunt. And on Town Lausanne, we're going to put Sepp on that one as the chairperson.
Okay.
And Larry Duncan is going to be the other member. On the water supply, we're going to, you said wat, you weren't on water supply?
No, I wasn't, but I just think that's a-
Oh, okay.
And that's one of the ones I wonder, I mean, I-
Topic good one.
Yeah.
Meat on the bone.
Okay, now, we are going to have a drought ad hoc committee, two, that I'm gonna set up tonight, but that'll be later on. Okay, on the water supply, then we're going to have Sepp Carolla as chairperson, and Ken Hunt as alternate.
Thank you.
Alternate just means the second person.
Second person, right, yeah, not alternate, yeah, separate, second person. Water conservation. Okay, that's going to stay the same, with Doug Fletcher being chairperson, and Sepp Carolla being the second committee member.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, and so I guess, is there anybody else, did I miss anybody? The, the Butte County Special District remains the same, 'cause it's an elected position. Same with Butte County Local Agency Formation. And the Botanic Garden stays the same, that's Bill Kellogg. And, and then the ACWA stays the same with Ken Hunt. Anybody else that can think of anything else I missed?
I call them.
Hope you are all satisfied.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, now we'll have the general managers' report.
Okay, you have, you have my written report, I won't cover the drought right now, 'cause it's an agenda topic, I'll talk about that later, but I am, I did get asked to speak to the Retired Teachers Association, they have a monthly meeting at lunch to give them a water supply drought update, and then Doug asked me to take his spot speaking in front of the demic, the local Democratic Committee next week, and I'll be talking to them about the water supply situation, so.
Were you able to get a hold of Gary?
Yep, yep, we got all, all lined up.
You already asked me to, I appreciate it, George, I have back-to-school meetings, I just wasn't-
No, I don't mind, I enjoy it, and I imagine that once I set my drought PowerPoint, I'll be using it more than just a couple times.
Everybody will want to hear that.
Yeah. You got an update on my Aqua Conference and some little takeaway points that I provided? The Corp Yard Project is our last, not this Monday, but the Monday previous, our crews started reporting to the new shop. They're moving, organizing, finalizing things up. We do not have our Town of Paradise temporary occupancy permit yet. We do not have our Town of Paradise temporary occupancy permit yet, we're kinda working on that, we may kinda bang heads with them at some point, but we'll see, but there's a few items that we have to take off and deal with the town on before they'll give us a temporary operating permit, and then we may not get a permanent one until the paving's done, but we'll see how that works out. Nonetheless, I instructed the crews to just get moved over, get things organized, and just start reporting there, and it's a really nice facility, like I said, if you wanna set up a tour, I'm more than happy to take you on a tour, or Jim Ladrini will. We are, like I said, we're making early preparations for a community open house, probably in May, late May, what I'm envisioning at this point is working with the Chamber of Commerce, and setting it up similar to what they do at the...
Party at the Park.
Party in the Park, to where, rather than us putting in a lot of effort, putting food out, et cetera, we'll have a band there, we already have a band in mind, a couple of the members are PID workers, and having vendors come up and, and sell food, so people have a, you know, play food to, to purchase, and spend some time there, listen to music, we'll set it up so they can sit around and hang out, and show, the employees, we're encouraging them to come and bring their families, and show off their new digs, and they seem pretty excited about doing that, and I'm very proud of the guys, they are very excited, they have a very strong commitment to keeping it in tip-top shape, and Keith is definitely going to ensure that that continues to happen. There's a lot of pride up there in the work they did, and it's pretty cool, so... The, the old corporation yard, we've just about got everything out, they were moving the lift yesterday and today, at least working on it. The fuel tanks, we found out, were not ours, they were actually given to us by our fuel vendor to use, as long as we purchased fuel from them, and so they've made arrangements to pick those up today or tomorrow. The owner has let us know, we have an emergency generator onsite that's been permitted through Butte County, it's an old generator that doesn't meet current air quality. We were instructed that it could stay on the site with permitting, if the new owner wanted to, you know, pay the fee and keep it active, he's informed us that he's not interested in keeping that, so we're making arrangements to move that over here. We did an evaluation to see if it could provide power to pump station number two, if we could meet some air quality guidelines to move it with some begging, and it's not powerful enough, so our next step is we're seeing if it will manage operating the D-tank well, we'll look at that, and if all of those options fail, then we'll, we'll surplus it and get rid of it. They're working on a whole list of items that'll come before the board to surplus and, and get out of here of miscellaneous things that we don't use, that just kinda got corralled at the old place. The grant, I made a mention of talking to Silver Consulting about grant opportunities, they found us a potential Watersmart Grant, which is a federal grant, and as you know, we are not very versed in federal grants, never really got one here. She found one that may qualify for pipe replacement, so Neil's working with her, Kevin did some work with her today, to get that application in by, I think it's next Friday, to see if we can get some pipe replacement grant funds through a federal program, so that's new for us, but pretty exciting, hope it works out good. You've got the news on the Process Water Recycle Project, so we will, Jim Passanese met with the staff today, I was at a Water Commission meeting, so I haven't really worked, met with the new people yet, and we're gonna get a feel for them, and we'll kinda decide what we think we should do going forward, and talk to you about that. The, the final report they wrote had, had some holes in it, I really appreciate the staff we have here, they know this project well, they, they dug through that report, they found the holes in it, even though it was a final report, they've really done a really stand-up job for the district in making sure we're getting our i's dotted and our t's crossed, and making things make sense, so when you see the final product, you'll understand it, hopefully. But the pricing did go up, we're looking at a nine and a half to thirteen, almost fourteen million dollar estimated price range at this point for the alternatives. The lowest one, the nine-five, is the staff's preferred alternative, where we don't have a equalization storage tank, we think that's our longest-standing project that will meet our needs for as long as we can foresee, so that was good, that it fell us the lowest cost at this point, and I'll remind you that that's the alternative that our staff came up with, not, not the consultant, so we'll, we'll keep plowing forward with that. I just talked to Roger about, hopefully next week, the Wetlands Consultant will be up here for a site visit, so we can get his input and report as soon as possible. What else do I got?
Did we have that can day, is that gone?
Yes, thank you. Last weekend was the Kids Fishing Day recycle promotion at Ace Hardware, we had a rainy day Saturday, nice day Sunday, I never got the report yet on the total pounds and dollars we received, but I can tell you, I was out there for a three-hour Saturday and three-hour Sunday, and the comments from the public were really, really good, they were very excited to do that, to help, so regardless of the amount of recyclables we get, it was a very positive public experience.
With the fact that it rained on that paper, that should've given us more weight.
Yeah.
I was there about nine-thirty, there were, I think, four guys there, and they'd already had about ten cars come through, and I think we started at nine.
Yeah.
So, that was promising.
Yeah, we filled, we probably filled a full four-yard, between the two days, a full four-yard dumpster of cans, full four-yard dumpster of recyclable plastic, and then the smaller, the glass, you know, were hit and miss, but some of that, too. So, really wanna appreciate Northern Recycling for working with us, they had guys there to get it prepped, they had guys there to train the people the first day, they took care, took all the bins every, at the end of the Saturday night, they hauled them all down to their yard, so they were secured, they really helped us out a lot, and we're a great partner in this effort, as well as it was in their newsletter also, so we will kinda circle around after we get the numbers, and see where we wanna go forward, it's probably be a PR committee discussion. They do have the, an option for people to donate year-round at their facility, and they can dedicate it to Kids Fishing Day, so we'll figure out whether we push that and keep the annual event, or we'll see how it goes. That'll be something we'll discuss with the Community Relations Committee, and that's all I can think of.
Okay, any questions from the Board of the Manager?
Yeah, the question, in paragraph one, you talk about, you're not gonna be here for the April meeting, and if we wanted to move it to the eighth, I don't know that we need to decide that, we can decide that in...
I'm requesting that that be put on the agenda for February.
February, okay.
Right, right now.
Okay, so that we can talk about that. And then, in relationship to the fuel tanks you talked about, we had new fuel tanks out here anyway, we had to buy...
Yeah, yeah.
To be compliant, so it wasn't something that we lost out on.
No, we were actually happy they called us in time, 'cause we'd already assumed that the old owner, they were his.
Yeah.
And he was gonna take them.
Yeah.
Then we had to call him back and say, well, we found out they're not ours, we're yours. So...
Well, that was good, 'cause we didn't have to figure out a way to dispose them.
Pay money to dispose them.
Yeah, whichever way that would've wound up, so...
Ken, you have any questions?
No.
Bill?
Yeah, in here, it says I have attached a paper from Fitch Ratings, identifying key rating drivers for bond rating water entities.
Uh-oh.
There's not, no, I didn't see any paper.
I'll get that out to you, I missed it, I don't know what happened there. I scanned it, and I might not have sent it to Georgia, and so I'll, I'll email it out to all of you.
The, the one thing after, total cost of conference and travel was twenty-four hundred dollars, I would hope that we would get a itemized travel thing, that's a nice even number, but I would really like to see that for the traveling of both you and Kevin in the future. We've never, the reports before, I haven't seen, I'm glad to see this, this is more than I've seen before, at least I know.
I think if they do it, then all of us have to do it.
Well, I think it, we're gonna, whatever, personnel and so...
No, directly.
Well, I, I would suggest you recommend that when we come to that policy.
Okay.
Good place for it.
And then, I have a suggestion, that staff visit some wetlands to get some ideas, I actually talked to the, get his name right, to Ron Kreitz today, and he suggested some places, but he said he has nothing that compares directly with the district's use of the water, but I thought it might be a way for, you know, I've never been to one of these wetlands either, but I think it'd be a way to educate our staff to what they exactly are, and what they look like, and what's involved, but it's a suggestion that you have two or a couple of them. There's some in Robbins, there's a very tiny one, he said, of course, Arcata, that won the National Award, that's quite a ways away, and then Petaluma.
I'll go with the one in Hawaii.
No, no, I'm sorry, Larry, you'll have to look at that one. And then Vallejo-Napa area, there's another one we mentioned, and he said he'd be available next week to be here, to work with the crew and everybody.
Well, typically, when we have a consultant up, just like we did with Roger, they give us some of their projects, and we go look at them like we did with all the other alternatives that Lee and Rob proposed, so I assume he'll give us a list, and we'll, we'll check it out.
That'd be great, I think that would, and if it would be possible, I don't know if my own business, when he comes, I'd, I'd like to personally meet the man, I've never met him, I've just talked to him on the telephone, and, let's see, I think that's it, George.
And Doug, any questions?
Lord, question. Would we tie into this ten billion, fourteen million dollar project, and the wetlands or whatever else, we're going to have a workshop meeting type, just dedicated to that, right?
Special Board meeting.
Yeah, Special Board meeting, that's what I'm talking about.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, anybody in the audience?
Hopefully on a rainy day.
Anybody in the audience would have any questions? The Manager's Report, now is your time to speak.
Governor, the drought situation.
You were waiting for the drought, okay, I thought you said you had something on the Manager's Report. Anybody else on the Manager's Report? Okay, then, we're through with that, then. Legal Report.
Okay, I, too, have a few items on the drought that I'll preserve for that time. Okay. Two other items, I've been appointed to the State Legislative Committee for the Association of California Water Agencies, Aqua, two-year commitment, what that committee does, it's, it's basically the lobbying arm of Aqua, and we will review and provide positions on every water-related bill, local agency bill, that comes up from the legislature the next couple of years. The big item that I anticipate this year is the water bond. Remember, the Governor Schwarzenegger originally set this up in two thousand nine or thereabouts, it was about eleven point four billion dollars, they've delayed it a couple times, and it's now scheduled for the November ballot. The proposals being made, they're, they're somewhat preliminary, but what I'm hearing is a bond that's anywhere from eleven point four, the original amount, all the way down to six billion dollars. The big item that, well, one of the big items that I'll be pushing for is, we want money for storage, and there's potentially some money there to address Magalia Reservoir. So, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity for me to put the interests of the district before state legislatures, the, some, some legislators, and hopefully we'll get a good outcome for the district. The second item is the test claim matter. Remember, we have this umbrella issue that certain local agencies, if they do not receive property tax revenue, are ineligible for reimbursement. I was able to persuade Glenclues Irrigation District and Oakdale Irrigation District to substitute into the test claim, so they are now also claimants. There's a possibility that we may start sharing the costs six ways as opposed to four ways, which would obviously be a benefit to the district, can't promise that, but, but I'll certainly push that, go ahead.
We also share the settlement with six instead of four.
We share with more than that.
No, every, if we prevail, whatever your costs are to, to comply with the mandate, that's what your award is. So, but GCID, I found fascinating, yeah, Dave?
Is this part of the nine entities that you're representing that we're...
That's the Bay Delta matter, I think is what you're referring to, this is the test claim, the water conservation legislation, but, but back to GCID, it's a very large ag district, to give you perspective on how expensive this legislation is, they have over twenty-five hundred turnouts, and they have to measure each turnout, and they've estimated that the measurement cost is at least ten thousand dollars, so they're looking at about forty-seven million dollars of capital expense, and then over two million dollars in annual operation, just to comply with these ag water measurement. So, it's just an astronomical fee that their growers are faced with. So, that's all I have, I'll have a number of items on drought, unless there's any questions.
Let me jump in on a couple of things. I am, as a Region Two Board Member, I'm on the Personnel Committee, Personnel Benefits Committee, Local Government Committee, and the Water Quality Committee, they meet quarterly, and that connection, I like to think helped in finding this other client, 'cause when we, when we started this state mandate claim, I got everything I could out of dust, and sent it to all of these different agencies, so they were aware of our test claim, and hopefully that helped get them to join in, and I would support his alleged committee, I, as a Board Member, we get a call, the Chair of that committee calls, has a conference call three days before with the region, to get their input on the bills, so they can actually support what our real position is to the Aqua as a whole, and it worked out pretty well.
Do we get a finder's fee for getting him over to Aqua?
I didn't negotiate that.
No, but, but that's a good point, we're Region Two, which is North State primarily, and there is occasionally a north-south split, so it's good that we have those calls, so that I can get my marching orders, and if it's, you know, toe the northern California line, then I need to know that, so, that's, that's rare, and, but it does occasionally come up.
Those prop up.
In the test claim, didn't we lose one of the four, of our original four?
Yeah, the, the staff at the commission dismissed on her own authority the two ag districts, so that's why we substituted in two new ag districts.
Exactly, yeah.
And it's interesting, in the, this just came out today, in the notice, the staff again is deciding, oh, we're not gonna dismiss them any longer, we're gonna consider that moot, and now we're gonna consider all the claim back together again, so it's...
Back up to six.
So, now we're at six, basically, and the, the hearing on that, the trial effectively is the end of May. So, if the, if the Board is, any members of the Board are interested, you're welcome to attend, it'll be in Sacramento, George will have to attend, I'll put him on the witness stand. So, it, it's moving along.
Anyone else have questions of legal? Anybody in the public? Okay, go on to old business then. It's continuing from the November twentieth, it's Financial Officers Agreement, reviewing and considering approval of the amended employment agreement with Kevin Phillips. Did you see the article that was in the Post?
I glanced through.
And this... And this, okay, because I thought it was, it was, I thought, if it's correct, I thought it covered it pretty good. Did you feel that way?
Yeah, it was, I thought it, I thought it covered it well.
Yeah, okay, so I was pleased with that.
It's facts.
Because it's not, we're not just giving him something for nothing, he's giving up something too and so forth. And so I want everyone to understand what's happening.
And also, just to clarify, it's not if I get terminated, it's if I get terminated without cause. Would that ever be paid out? If I get terminated with cause, I'm down the road.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, right. But he, but he is, you're going to explain to the public what he's, why this happened again or not?
Why, why what happened?
What happened?
Why we're here.
Yeah.
Negotiation?
Well, we're here partly because, you know, Kevin's a 10-year employee now, almost, eight years. So he came on board with a three-month severance pay, which was appropriate because he was a brand-new person with no history with the board. When we were doing his evaluation, he expressed concerns about his, his position being very at risk, I guess, for political will, for lack of a better term. So then we started discussing his concerns and issues and that's why it was brought forward when it was.
The conflict of, the fact that he deals with the unions?
Yeah, there's been, there's been issues expressed in the past by board members that someone in the room getting the same cola as what you're negotiating is, has the appearance of conflict.
And if he didn't, if we offer him something and he turns it down, then he gets most likely more money.
Yeah, keep in mind that, we'll take you back, this is a, this is a negotiation. So Kevin provided an offer to you back in November. And so tonight's action is considering a counteroffer essentially. He doesn't have to take what you approve tonight, he can consider what your counteroffer is and accept it or deny it. In the past, it's not a humongous difference, but the cost of living increases that have been awarded to employees is more than the Social Security index that he's willing to take on in this proposal.
Director, do you have any questions?
I have, I have a couple of questions.
Should we let the committee present?
Oh, okay.
First. I was going to say.
Okay, we'll let the committee present first.
We met on it, went through it, talked about various issues and came away, made some small refinements to it. And in regard to this negotiation, you know, if we, if we don't accept the counterproposal or if we change it drastically, Kevin can stay with the contract he's got. Or he could continue on negotiating, he can pull out negotiation anytime he wants to. There's no real reason for him to negotiate other than his seeing this, this need. The committee is recommending that the contract that we have, as you've read in the agenda package, is approved by the board. And once again, you know, the biggest thing to remember is we all feel that Kevin is going to be a long-term employee around here forever and will retire here. I think he's even indicated that that's his, his preference, not moving out of the area. And as, if we do not terminate him, then this fee will never be paid. If he is terminated and he's terminated for cause, the fee will never be paid. If he's convicted of a crime of moral turpitude, we terminate him, the fee will not be paid. I had a, I had some discussion about moral turpitude here. But, so we, the committee doesn't really feel like we are at a, a risk of any cost there at all. And we think the, it was probably a very good idea to remove Kevin and George from the, remove Kevin from the aspect of getting whatever increase the management team gets, our management group. And this, this helps take care of that issue also. Seth, was there anything else that?
Yeah, I wrote something that I was thinking about the other night. And basically what I wrote was, I feel that this agreement ensures that any responsible board would never dismiss Kevin without cause. And any irresponsible board would have to answer to their constituents as to why they were paying Kevin a 12-month severance package without trying to fix the problem first. This would also give Kevin enough time to secure a new job in an area he and his family have set down roots if he was dismissed without cause. Kevin is a huge asset to the district and in my opinion, one we cannot afford to lose. And to give him peace of mind that he cannot be dismissed by a board with an irresponsible or vindictive nature is the very least this responsible board can do.
Any questions with the other members? Yes, very hard from our November discussion. I worked with quite a number of chief financial officers in quite a different number of positions in both the public and private sector in my career. And I have yet to find any that I prefer over Kevin Phillips at this particular point, and I've shared it with him. He and I see eye to eye on a lot of the financial happenings. So you know my feelings towards him at this point, and he knows that. But I still have a few things that, a couple, well, actually just one. There's no problem with any of the here that I see except for item number four on page 53 and number nine on page 55. I'll go to number nine before I move back to four. I questioned the performance evaluation quite explicitly because I think when it first started in the November 1, George, the general manager of the general manager, is going to be the primary evaluator. And I didn't think, since the chief financial officer who I'm pointing at is going to be working for the board, and you will go to our flow chart, that's exactly what it says out here, and everybody agreed with me on that. And you said that you would rewrite number nine, and I think Dustin had involved with it, and I think it's perfect. It meets my needs and the needs of the position completely. Whereas in addition, every year, the board, directors, and employee will set out and set goals and objectives for the ensuing year. And one of the reasons I wanted something of that particular type in there because Kevin now is a manager, his position is a finance manager. So he just manages the funds, okay, doing quite nicely. But when you become the chief financial officer, which you know, we talked about this, and we're looking at a 10 billion or a 14 billion or a $100 million project, it's your responsibility to tell the board and everybody else in the world what we do, need to do for the district to stay solid, am I making sense?
Mm-hmm.
In big print and bold words. When you're just managing it, you just manage it, and if it's gone, it's gone, you know? But now you're taking on a whole different role, which he understands, you know, on that. I have complete faith that he would be able to do that. Now I'd like to move back to number four, severance pay. I got an idea that he's going to retire here, I agree with all of that. But business is business, and I just, as I've made statements here before, I just think that, well, what severance package is excessive. Because if we were ever going to terminate him, even with a brand-new board coming in, let's say we have three new board members this coming January, they would have to have cause. If they didn't, I'm rejecting my voice more than I have now, you know? And I can't believe anybody would be elected to come in here and try to do that without cause. So you know where I'm standing at that particular point. So what I'd like to do is I would like to move to amend the contract to strike out on the second line down 12 months and insert six months base pay. Make any sense, Mr. President?
Which, what paragraph?
The second sentence down.
Four.
On item number four, severance pay. I would like to, I'd like to remove just 12, and then on the parenthesis is 12, and insert six, S I X, and the parenthesis is six months. I move that at the fourth amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Doug, I've already.
I like more, I guess I'm, I'm like Doug only, I'm not, I don't use as big of words to say that Kevin's done an outstanding job. I think, and I'm very relieved and happy that he's moving away from a cola setup to this other one. I think that's an excellent thing on Kevin's idea to do that. I'm not worried he was pressured or anybody else suggested it to him, it was all his own. And so that he isn't, when we come to employee negotiations and so forth, he isn't influenced or looked like he's being influenced by the cola thing. So all that is acceptance, but I'll just use the example, when this person came out in the press and a little clerk says to me, well, when I lose my job, all I do is get the check going out the door. Or how can this guy get a whole year's salary? Uh, 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 off she went. So, and I've had some other people the same way. So even though Kent doesn't think that's the way I should do my politics in this thing.
Or Ken, I'm sorry.
But I think that the six months is ample, I don't think we're going to get a vindictive board. We have a very active community now that is coming to the meetings, they're watching it, they're videotaping it. And as long as that's going on, I don't think we're going to have a board get out of control. So, that's my call.
Anybody else?
You've had the committee's response personally, I think we should put this feature into the contract. It says a lot to about any potential replacement. If Kevin were to get run over by a bus one day and we have to go out and find a replacement for him, not that we would need to give a replacement, that type of a, of a security package starting off, because we don't know them. But they would see what type of a contract, they would ask what type of a contract the previous chief financial officer had. And I think it's something that would attract them for longevity purposes and say, well, I can get to that point and I can have the security if I choose to take myself out of the mainstream and focus my abilities here in this water district. So that's my opinion.
Seth, you wish to add anything?
You heard my statement and I just think that, I don't think that the number really matters that much because it's not something this board would ever invoke. I don't, if it's our responsible board, it's a number that would never be used. It was a severance package that would never be used. So whether it says six or 12 or what Kevin agrees to.
If we move, if we change it to six, he could turn it down.
This is a negotiation, so yeah, it's purely, it's purely up to Kevin to decide whether or not he wants to accept that or not. So I think that 12 is, six sounds like a long time, but Kevin has directed his field in, in what he does. He's not just your average CPA out there anymore and he's not just taking care of, you know, public finances, you know, or private finances. He has changed the direction of what he is skilled in and what he is learning about and to take care of this district. So I'm going to stick with, I still think 12 is the number we should be at.
George, you said you wanted?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide some, I guess, clarification to some of the statements, just so it keeps in focus. Keep in mind that every other employee of the district is a government, public employee. And by being that, they're provided certain protections that the clerk down at the street doesn't have. They have to be terminated for cause, unless you're going to lay off everybody. And so there is a difference here because we have high-level management employees that are making not much less than Kevin, 10% or so for the assistant engineer, treatment plant superintendent, water division superintendent. A board can't come in and say, oh, Keith needs to be fired because he's paid too much. Well, it doesn't work that way because you could leg Keith off, but you couldn't lay him off and then turn around and hire a new water superintendent without playing some real fancy legal hoops. So just keep that in mind, I just wanted to clarify that so people understand this, this whole security issue. He can be terminated, yeah, like anyone else, but there's many other employees here that have protections that he, that contract employees don't have. And that's why he seeks this kind of change to his contract.
Ken, did you say you wanted?
Yeah, the only, one thing I wanted to add was it may sound like the committee, or it may sound like that I personally am looking out for the best interest of Kevin Phillips, but I am not doing that. I think this is in the best interest of the district and that's why I'm making the recommendation.
Is this a proper time to ask the public to talk, since there is a motion?
Yep.
Of course, that's one of the reasons why George and Kevin, you become an exempt employee. I've both been up to civil service where I would have had the moral perpetuity almost or beyond. And then the unions would have come in and backed me like they're doing back East. But I opt to become an exempt employee because there's a lot of gratitude being an exempt employee. Really, that's why on your chief financial officer, there is, on this particular point. Anybody in the public wish to address this thing?
May I address you from here, you always schedule there?
Can, is he being recorded? Is he being picked up?
I'll, I'll move over.
Yeah, better, just be safe.
Thank you, Lauren Harvey. I was in hopes, I was in hopes I, that we would put some sort of a limit on the job title. In other words, myself as a citizen of the public, I'd like to know what that job's eventually going to cap out at. And if we're going to, if we're going to negotiate a contract, why haven't we got a limit on what the job's going to cap out at? In other words, he's a young man, probably 40, so if he puts in another 20 years, if he puts in another 20 years and the hiring, he could work till he's 90 because you can't let him go just for age. So if he worked, if he worked till he couldn't hardly get in here, at the, at the Social Security raise every year, I can foreseeably see this thing being a real expensive job. And so I, I was, I spoke on it before and I was hoping that we would put some sort of a limit in on the, on the thing. And I think now's the time, if you're going to ask him to sign a contract, now's the time to find out what that limit should be and negotiate that limit at the end. Because he'll eventually cap out somewhere, hopefully. And if you don't, he'll just be raising the Social Security limit from here on out till, till ever. And when you get over a job that pays over 100 grand a year, it amounts to quite a bit of money fast. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the board. Let's have a roll call on the motion, please.
Can we repeat the motion one more time, please?
The motion was to amend the contract striking the severance pay of 12 months to six months base salary.
Thanks.
Okay, roll call, please. Do we go reverse recall, roll call? No, it's okay. He was giving us a bad time because now, now he gets to vote last. I would be happy to be first, vote.
Director Carr?
No.
Director Matt?
No.
President Duncan?
No.
Director Keller?
Yes.
And Director Fisher?
Why, yes. Okay, it fails three to two.
I move to approve the amended employment agreement with Kevin Phillips as presented in the.
The unamended, did you change it?
It's we amended it from.
It's an amended one, yeah. Amendment from November.
It's amended from the other.
You're right, that did sound weird.
Yeah.
Presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, discussion.
What changes were made since the last, did you say you amended it?
Well, it, it is an amended. Well, it is an amended contract, that's how it started.
No, I know, but you just said amended from the last meeting.
Oh, did you, okay, okay, how in the amended?
Well, Doug hit on one, page 55, the performance evaluation. Remember, it used to only be the general manager would do the evaluation. I suggested adding a board component to that as well.
And the committee also added the last line of scheduling a performance review at any time.
About switching from the COLA to the, just the social security, right?
Nope, that was the original.
Original?
Yeah.
Okay, so do you understand what was changed?
Oh, the second part I did, what George mentioned, I didn't understand.
The last line of the performance evaluation where it says the board of directors may at any time schedule a performance review, that was added by the committee.
Oh, okay.
The other language was amended by legal counsel based on the board's conversation. And I'm, I didn't get a track changes from her, so I'm not sure if, what else.
That was, that was a good change, since we didn't take this, this performance review.
I think that was pretty much it. There might have been some other things, but.
Yeah, everything else was just minor.
Oh, when, yeah, there was a date change because we were at November and so then we had to change to January.
Was there a change in continuing education too?
The, my comment on this is, I didn't make a comment before. Evidently, I mean, he is giving up a lot by asking for this change. And so therefore, he must put a lot of stock in the 12-month thing. And if you say there's no difference if we do it, what difference will it make? The problem is, is I've been in politics for a little time in paradise. And I've seen people, I've seen people do come here with vinegar in their blood and they don't care what it costs. And they don't care who they hurt or what.
Well, in that particular case, that I don't think six months would make any difference. And I'm sure you, that if they do, I'll tell any board member that's running, if they run against you, if they get in here and start talking about it like that, we may have to go in closed session, but I will be a nice guy. In fact, I may get a mo board to stand out there in the public room and call them bad names or do that type of thing. And I have enough following in this town that they would follow me at that different point.
But I've seen it happen. I've seen it happen, so anyway, that's why I don't, I feel that it's, it'll, I don't think it'll ever cost the district any money. And if it makes Mr. Phillips feel better about his job, then I'm all for it.
Well, I would, other than just strictly an item of business, a proper way to do business, in my opinion. I'm sure that you could go over and talk to the Oregon, Orland Unified School District and they might say, "Ooh, did they just settle a late, little final?" They, that guy talked him into 18 months, the end of the rule, you know? And he's paying it now. At this point, I can't believe it, because I've been involved in school business since 1960. And I've been in some of those discussions, not as a school board member, but as a negotiator and all of this type of stuff. It was, I can't wonder what in the world they were thinking of. But I used to advise the Orland School District, the A.
Okay, any other comments from any directors? Anything from the floor? A roll call, please.
Director Corolla?
Yes.
Director Hatt?
Yes.
Director Kellal?
Yes.
Director Plesch?
Yes.
President Duncan?
Yes.
Pass is five oh.
Thank you, board. Really appreciate it.
So, is that an acceptance, Kevin?
I accept, as presented.
He can't turn it down. He's the one that's drunk.
You accepted mine.
Yeah, I'm not sure he could turn it down at this point.
Okay, what did I do with my agenda?
You want us to recommend moving up drought?
Whether we got ahead of it. There may be some people here interested in drought, Mr. President, so if you want to move that up, we can.
The drought one?
Yeah.
Number D, okay, let's go to eight D, please.
Second to his.
Second to his.
Start with mine.
Okay.
Go up to my manager's report.
Manager's report.
Yeah, I didn't have anything else other than manager's report. I wanted to point out a few things. I've been working on these different charts and graphs for the Water Conservation Committee. And I want to point out a few things. This little red dot, this is my first one, total storage in the district. That little red dot shows where at now. We haven't been this low at this point, and that was January 1st. And since, I believe this one here is like 2008. So, it's considerably down. As you can see from this chart, I calculated where our average storage has been since 1998. And so, we're 73% of average. But what makes sense more so is we're 2,808 acre-feet lower than the average at this time of year. And we use about 7,000 acre-feet each year based on our last five years of average. And so, we're not looking good. This is our Paradise Reservoir elevation. This chart, this line down here is 1977, 7677. This one was in 1991. That's our next worst year. You can see that one. This is where we have a little hope. By April 1st, it was up some into May. So, we climbed all the way till June 1st. We never filled. But we did get some late spring rains and that's something that can happen this year and save our bacon, so to speak. But this is the picture that I can best predict right now, or at least show you where we stand right now. Last year, we got almost no precipitation in the entire spring. 2013 was the lowest precipitation on record as a calendar year. And so, if we replicate that in 2014, you can see that from our storage at this point to what our five-year average of consumption is at our treatment, through our treatment plant, you can see that with no change, our reservoirs are essentially empty in December. So, the reason we have in this request to start a drought committee is the fact that this can't happen. There will have to be cutbacks. We have in our Urban Water Management Plan, a kind of draft policy, so to speak, that analyzes our storage. And through our history, we found that April 1st is the trigger date that we should really be looking at. We can't expect any precipitation to increase our storage with any amount of confidence after April 1st. So, in our Urban Water Management Plan, we trigger April 1st as the date. And whatever percentage we are below our storage is what we recommend the cutbacks need to be going forward through that year. So, that's why you see the lines all together until April 1st. And then they start diverging because that's normally when we would start taking action. So, you can see that this, this is very significant. Even with a 50% cutback, we're only leaving the end of the year with 3,200 plus or minus acre-feet of storage. That's not very comforting when you use 7,000 acre-feet a year. So, what the purpose of starting the drought committee, we have, you know, thankfully, last year, President Corolla started the Conservation Committee and we're working on that side of the coin. But what the drought committee is about is working out a policy and a process for implementing reductions in the district. That's what I need guidance on. I still have tons of data to crunch, so it'll be a couple, few weeks before I probably am ready to meet with them. But we need to start establishing a policy for how we would implement cutbacks. Hopefully, we don't have to do it this year and we'll get a pineapple express that saves our day. But we can't expect that. And so, I'll remind you that 30% of our customers over time have merged over to the A-rate. A-rate uses 85 cubic feet of water in an entire year to qualify for that rate. So, we're not gonna gain a lot of storage out of a third of our business with cutbacks. They're not going, they're not the biggest problem. And plus, we need to consider their efforts at making that commitment early on because we'd be in worse shape today if everyone was a B customer. We'd be in much worse condition. So, that's what the committee's all about. I did hand out, I don't know if there's any for the public, but we can get them to you ahead. Okay, there's some over, over on the table.
George, I'm sorry, for clarification, you said 85 cubic feet? Did you mean 85 units?
Eighty-five units, eighty-five, so 8,500 cubic feet.
Eighty-five feet, there.
Eighty-five units, sorry.
They really are conserving.
Good catch.
Just to give the public an idea.
You can smell them when they walk down.
Yeah, just to give the public an idea, what is the normal allotment of water on your monthly bill? How many units? You mean, what's a typical, non-A?
I think our average B-rate customer a month was more like 25 units. On average, over an entire year per month.
300 a year.
But I'm going off of memory on that. This article I handed out really was the best, easiest to understand kind of meteorological explanation of where we sit. They're calling what's happening the ridiculously resilient ridge. There's a four-mile-high and 2,000-mile-long ridge of high pressure off the coast of California and up into Oregon. And that high pressure is stopping any storms from coming our way and it's pushing them north mostly at this point. And they have not seen a pressure, high pressure similar to this since 1977 and it's looking worse than that. So, what they did, what they, how they explained it was essentially it's like having the Sierra Nevada Range shoved out the ocean. So, it's pushing everything around, it's dropping everything out there before it ever comes on shore. And that's what's causing our problems. So, if circumstances change and that blows up finally, we may get some storms. But at this point, we need to start planning for how we're gonna implement cutbacks because that's not gonna happen in a week. It's gonna take some thought and some planning, some effort. How are we gonna police it? What's our level of policing? Are we going to institute a new rate that, call it a penalty rate, whatever you want to call it, for those that don't meet their obligations to conserve? Lots of issues surrounding how you would implement this.
Then there's also the financial impact to the district.
Yes.
Because if we're cutting way back, that's, we're gonna have to estimate that and see where that leaves us with a reduction of consumption revenues. So, we still have all of our fixed expenses to pay, which are significant. And we're gonna have to address that properly.
Dustin has a little more info. You wanna pull that up?
Do you have a clicker, a laser?
Yes.
Don't we have some existing rules and regulations for drought?
We only have what's in the Urban Water Management Plan, which is the idea that on April 1st, we will require cutbacks to our customers equivalent to the reduction in our full storage. That's all we have right now. We have a draft drought proclamation, but we don't have an implementation strategy. And really, it's come to play because it's probably been over five years that our A-rate customers have gone to about 10% of our customers now up to 30%. And so, that, bringing that into play is significant. We also looked at Noble Orchard data and we'll, I'll probably have the committee sit down with Noble and have a discussion with him, our largest irrigation account. But he's cut back his water use considerably with selling off some property and probably changing crops. So, he's down to only a couple hundred acre-feet a year of use at this point. So, that's not gonna be a big help. Go ahead, Dustin.
Okay, so, there's another association called NACLA, Northern California Association of Water Resources. And I was in a meeting headed by NACLA with a number of state representatives of various state agencies, governor's office, et cetera. And so, I pulled some slides from the discussion. And this first slide here, this is precipitation from the East Station Index. So, it covers the northern Sierra Nevada Cascade Range. And you can see, this is actually as of January 9th. So, as of January 9th, we are trending drier than 7677 in the North State. And we've actually, if this were up to date, I believe that line is now passed. We are now in really historic territory. So, can I have the next slide, Kevin? So, this is another good indicator of just how bad things are. This is still water content and this is Northern California. The blue again, we're below 7677. And again, we use 7677 because that is the historic worst-case scenario. So, you know, we're really in bad conditions. 2013 driest year on record. And this extends not just Northern California, Central and Southern California. I think the only part of the state, I find this kind of funny in a perverse way. The only part of the state that is, has above-average precipitation is the Mojave Desert. So, can't really rely on them to help us. Can I see the next slide, Kevin? Okay, so this is Lake Orville. And again, the red line reflects 7677. And this is current storage levels. So, what NACLA asked me to do is put together an emergency proclamation. The last time we did this was 2009. And there was some litigation challenging Governor Schwarzenegger's emergency proclamation. I was, actually had a number of clients that were part of that litigation. We lost because it was poorly written. So, NACLA asked me and my firm to draft what we believe is appropriate language, defensible language from environmental groups. And we did that. And that was part of the discussion yesterday. And George and I have been kind of talking back and forth. What could we put into an emergency proclamation that could possibly help PID? And to be candid with you, there's not a lot. There's, you know, maybe some operational things. For example, some environmental conditions that could be lifted that would allow maybe PG&E to sell us some water in a worst-case scenario. So, that's one item that is a possible benefit. But for the most part, PID is gonna be on its own. And we're gonna have to address a potential emergency through our own solutions. So, you know, what I would say to the board is, as a state, we're very clearly, in my opinion, in an emergency situation. And I think the numbers bear that out. We're actually better off as, in this small region than the most of the state. And I would attribute that to Mother Nature because we were actually spilling at this time last year because December and November were so wet. And then, I would also attribute it to just better conservation. We've, you know, improved our leaf detection. All those things add up. So, we're leaving more water in the reservoir than we would have been at 7677. So, one of the things that if, if things continue to remain dry, one of the things I anticipate coming to the board with is possibly declaring an emergency. And at the local level, you have that power. And, you know, so that's one option on the table. And if you declare an emergency, then you could adopt rules and regulations that are, you know, kind of, the limit is really your imagination. Not just cutting back, but limits on outdoor watering, limits on applying water to hard surfaces, washing your car, those types of things. It's, we're at a point in the water year where we could still have probably an average or maybe even a slightly above-average year if it just started raining. We're also at a point where if it doesn't rain, as George's graph showed, that we could be in some serious trouble. So, I think I would urge the board to. So I think I would urge the board to establish the ad hoc committee. I think it's good to have it ad hoc so that we could meet on very short notice. If things remain dry, we probably want to have some noticed public meetings to engage the public in drought preparedness and start brainstorming on some ways to possibly address the situation. So you want to add anything, George?
Yeah, last thing I have, I have reached out to PG&E to find out if there was any possibility of getting water out of the Miocene Canal or out of the Hendricks. You know, we've always heard the Hendricks is not an option, but in extreme condition, prior to spring, you know, salmon runs, et cetera, there would be a tiny little window that if they had water available and were able to pull together a sale, it's potentially they could sell us water to dump out of the Hendricks Canal. Small potential, but at least we're trying. On the Miocene, there's probably a little better opportunity that there would be water available. One of the problems with the Hendricks that I haven't had a chance to talk to Dustin about is they don't have consumptive rights to that water. So it kind of throws a whole wrinkle in that. The Miocene Canal, they have pre-nineteen-fourteen consumptive rights. And so if I find that they potentially have water to sell out of the Miocene, then I will have staff working with Rain for Rent. We could potentially put in a temporary pipeline and pump system from the Miocene up to the treatment plant. Not going to be cheap, but it's my job to explore all the options and figure out what they cost later and let you guys decide what the end result is. So those are the kind of things we're working on. I haven't had a discussion with Delora yet, but I don't, they have very limited treating capacity currently in their Lime Saddle Treatment Plant. So they don't have a lot of excess capacity to assist us through that area, but I haven't had a conversation with them yet.
How much money do we have in the not a rainy day fund?
Three twenty-three.
Three?
Three hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Three hundred and twenty-three thousand, okay. Because I remember we set that up several years ago. Not a rainy day. Well, it's cute. Yeah.
George, the money, the water coming out of the Hendricks or the Miocene, wouldn't that be water from the Sterling Bluffs?
No, Sterling Bluffs is a very tiny percentage of what they get out of there. It's two-hundred-and-eighty acre-feet of the thousands of acre-feet that go down that canal.
Would that be enough to pay for the rain, bird, rain people? Three twenty-three?
No.
Oh, we'd even need more than that.
Probably lucky if that covered the power cost.
I was going to mean the study.
No, no, we don't want to study.
The engineering plan to get it, you know.
Right. Well, I'm going to appoint an ad hoc committee, which I will be the chairman and Ken will be the member. Since we're on the finance committee, I figured it'd be a good idea. So that is done.
Can we take a break? We've time to...
Okay, let's have a five-minute break, or six minutes, come back at eight-ten. We'll be back in order. Does any of the directors wish to say anything more on this subject? I did already appoint an ad hoc committee. No one? And anyone from the public?
I'll go first. For the record, Ward Haverill, and just a point of reference, I am a member of the PID, a public member of Water Conservation Committee, and background knowledge and all kinds of things that have nothing to do with anything. But I can address some things about this subject because I've received a lot of feedback lately, mostly because of the letter that you saw that was in the Chico ER in December for which I wrote a rebuttal. And I have to just direct off the top, tell you, every single piece of feedback I got was positive based on what I said. And that's essentially that there's been a lot of nonsense in how we manage water in this state for a long time. Not just locally, not just you, not just PID, not George, not this board, but in general, that feedback has been, we've been doing the wrong thing for a long time. Looking at a couple of things specifically, some people would say, if we're into a drought, why don't we just put more water in the Magali Reservoir? Let's just put it there now. If we don't need it, we can run it out before the DAMN people from California, that's D-A-M-N people, show up from California, say you can't put water in there. It doesn't beat damn safety requirements, right? Okay. But if we need the water, there are places to put it. That's one of them. You mentioned the canal up there. That's another thing. I don't think we negotiate, just take the water, apologize later. You know, if it comes to where nobody has any water, water is a right, you got to have water. You can't give away bottled water. This is the kind of feedback I'm getting. Now, some of it makes no sense to you as water managers, or to me, but I will tell you, a lot of the feedback that comes from people is they're a little disgusted, they're upset. Let's go back a while. You mentioned in your report that you went to this conference, and one of the things, I think it was at the top of one of your notes, you have to remember the past in order to plan for the future. Is that what it said?
Yep.
Okay. Nineteen oh-two. What happened in nineteen oh-two? A hydrologist with a fleeting thought says, we have to solve two problems. We've got to solve two problems in the southwest United States. How are we going to do that? What we're going to do is we're going to dam the Colorado River. Thirty years later, thirty years later, something finally happens. We get the Boulder Dam, right? Hoover Dam, whichever name you choose, for two reasons. There were two reasons that was done. Flood control and irrigation. Later, there were two secondary reasons entered. Back in the fifties, we're planning for the Orville Dam to be completed in the sixties for three reasons. Flood control, irrigation, and recreation. The fourth one added later. Generation, electricity, same thing at Hoover Dam. But those kinds of plans take place over a long period of time. Nineteen seventy-six, we just saw about it here, our worst current history of drought. Ninety-one, again. Twenty thirteen, driest again. From seventy-six till now, how long is that period of time when we did not make a decision for more water storage? Wasn't there something in the grand jury report about water storage? Hasn't that been there before in the fifties? And here we are, this much later. So when my letter essentially says, you know, we just haven't made sense with what we've done, the feedback I get is, why haven't we done something? What's the holdup? When are we going to do these things? And yet, there aren't any answers here for that. If all of the public that had called me or emailed me, showed up tonight, what would you tell them? What would you tell them?
Give us the money.
Yes, we have an approval for a new reservoir.
No, give us the money.
Yes, we fulfill Magali Dam?
Give us the money. They won't give us the money.
How did we do it before?
I don't know.
They said there wasn't enough money for the Boulder Dam either. That was a federal reclamation project. It had nothing to do with the federal government, did it? It had something to do with the southwest United States.
Were you here when we did the raise on our last thing?
Yes.
And how much protest there was?
Yes.
And how much was it? Two cents of...
I know.
Unit?
Mm-hmm.
It'd be a lot more if we...
Right. You also heard me before, and I did this before, we made the proposal for a Water Conservation Committee, and that was about educating our users, our consumers, the people that actually have a meter, the water flows through, and something happens to it in their house. And I objected to the, we fix the leaks in the street and that's how we got our twenty percent reduction. You got to do that anyway. But that's not educating the public. PG&E started a huge educational campaign a long time ago because they didn't want to build any more power plants. They wanted people to save electricity so they'd have more to sell without capital, right? Well, we sort of do the same thing with water and other resources. Yet, one of the things that's come up in this, and it's in the ER, again, you know, you mentioned the Mercury News thing there, it's been in all the papers in California for a long time now. They've all covered something about water. Drought is sort of a secondary name underneath that. But this one's about, save the water without toilet cops. And he goes on to say, at the end, partner with water companies on a public education campaign to teach people how cheap and easy it is to change fixtures, but I wouldn't employ toilet police. Every time we go through these, one of the, someplace lower on in the article, lower on in the emphasis, is educating the public. But that's where the water use is. It goes through the meter, you get your money, that's not the end of it. The twenty-twenty legislation and the original intent there was to tell your consumers how to save the twenty percent. I don't think PID and several other districts are doing a good job of that. It's part of what we're going to do with the Water Conservation Committee, but you got to look back. You got to look back to the past to look forward to what we're doing in the future. Seventy-six was bad, you knew it here. Ninety-one was bad, you knew it here. Twenty thirteen was bad. What are we going to do with our consumers to help them understand what it is that we expect so that we can avoid this problem? That's my point. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Most of you know me, I'm Wade Killingsworth. I lead the Trails Group for about the last six and a half years in Paradise Pines Property Rowments Association. I'm not a member. Delora Water is where I get my water. However, what you do does affect me and my association. And I want to point out that what I'm going to bring up, I realize, is an extremely low priority for the things that you are discussing, but I do want to bring it up anyway. So a good number of members before I arrived in the association didn't know that we actually own property below Magali Reservoir. We own a good chunk of property along Little Beak Creek, several hundred acres there. And when I got there, I started the Trails Committee, and we developed trails there, and we used the trails there very regularly for recreation. Admittedly, not as important as what you're talking about, but I just want you to be aware of this. And a focal point of that is, you know, Little Beak Creek, where we don't have a creek and enjoy the beauty, at Little Pearl, which you might have heard of before, we constructed a trail down Little Pearl a few years ago. And all I want to, I want just four things. Number one is, is there a legal minimum to how much water you can let out of the reservoir? And if there is, what is it and how close are you to that? And I'm not here to complain, I'm just here to get information so I can understand the process. So, and then there's one other thing, and then...
Yes, it's your pleasure.
Who? Yes, yeah, go ahead.
We have a half-CFS requirement below Magali Dam. We measure it, we meter it, we meet it at all times. We actually meet it, plus a little because there's a little leakage in Magali Dam over and above that, that's probably not worth diving down the meter, but that's where we're at. I did, I don't know what's happened downstream. We did have the water master for Beak Creek visited me last year. Something happened up there and water was disappearing. So they got a full tour of our place and what our releases are, and I can just tell you, we're meeting our commitment.
So you're at one and a half right now?
Hmm.
Okay. So I really shouldn't expect anything to go lower?
Correct.
Okay. And, you know, again, I'm not here to complain, I'm just here to try to understand what's going to happen in the future. And speaking of the future, the final thing that I wanted to point out is that, again, I know it's a low priority, but we do use that area for recreation. And like I said, our membership wasn't really aware of it before I arrived, and maybe you guys aren't aware of it, but I just want you to be aware of it. In any future decisions that you have to make, I would like you to at least remember that. And it probably could not have much of an effect because you have much more important things to do, you're going to supply water to close to thirty thousand people. But anyway, I just want you to be aware of it, and I appreciate the information. So it's pretty dismal down there, but, you know, that's to be expected in such a huge drought. But at least I'll enjoy the stream, so. All right. Thank you.
I'd point to, you say the BOA owns several hundred acres down Beak Creek?
Yeah.
Of the...
Right below, right below the reservoir. You know the chain link fence right below the reservoir? I think it's a couple hundred, it might be more like a hundred and sixty, I'll have to double-check that. But it's miles. We lead hikes from a corridor from Andover, which is in the association. We also lead hikes from the, basically, the optimal parking lot, walk along Beak to my road, and we eventually end up on our property that. We walk along the old Nickerson Ditch, which was the original purchase of PID. We walk along that, that's on our property.
Basically, on the east, I call that the north side of the creek.
Yeah.
Beak Creek is the north side, and Skyway over here.
Well, we're on both sides, so we start, in one of our hikes, we start from Paradise, the optimal parking lot, and then another hike we start over from direct access into the Greenbelt off from Andover.
What would happen if we didn't let that one and a half out?
Fish and wildlife.
One half. One half. One half.
Zero point five, yeah.
What would happen?
Fish and wildlife would come after us. We'd be subject to penalties.
Penalties and fines, right, okay. Could there be a point where we can't do it because of the drought?
If we don't have any more water.
Yeah.
Tap runs dry.
Possible, yeah. Wouldn't that be an excuse?
Thank you, Wade.
Not to be penalized, though?
Well...
If we're not doing anything wrong, we're not going to get penalized.
Yeah, right, okay.
And the governor's proclamation, this is already a tension. It's not just recreation, it's water uses, users versus environment. Folsom Reservoir is like thirty days from Deadpool. I mean, it is a catastrophe. So the Bureau of Reclamation that operates Folsom has already ramped down releases, and they're killing all the reds because of that. They're drying out the little salmon eggs. So they're already making really tough decisions, and recreational things are suffering as well. I mean, I like to vote on Lake Orville. I don't, there's not going to be much boat ramp for me to do that.
There's none in Lime Saddle, it's been closed.
Lime Saddle, Bidwell's just a little ways away.
Sacramento County declared...
The dam's the last...
A lot of counties are...
And they don't have meters on all of their users.
The other, one of the last, this is kind of to Ward's point, nineteen seventy-six, seventy-seven, that was a different world back then. The population has doubled, the population of California has doubled. I don't know what Paradise's population has done since seventy-six, seventy-seven.
We're about twenty-five thousand.
Twenty, okay, so a little bit more.
Seventy-seven? I don't think so. I don't think I went back that far.
The other thing, there were no biological opinions, there were no Delta water quality standards. So all the environmental flow requirements didn't exist in seventy-six, seventy-seven. So that's another huge demand on water.
There's no treatment plant.
No treat, here?
Yeah, no treatment plant.
No, there wasn't a treatment plant.
So no eight percent going back through the washwater process.
Right. We also have an entirely different ag economy in this state now. There's much more acreage planted and much more permanent crops, vines, trees, and the like. So the potential for economic damages is much greater now than in seventy-six, seventy-seven.
Well, I think the rate per two months was less than ten dollars, PID. And I was upset that I was paying that much for rainwater.
And back then, it was rainwater.
I want to go on and on Dustin's comment about ag. Since that, you've gone to drip and low-rate sprinklers, almost all new orchard channels in, and that's cut down the use of water, probably seventy percent against what used to be flood irrigating. And the rice people actually use less water because there are shallow rice fields now, which we couldn't do in those years, we didn't have the technology. So there is a lot of conservation that's taking place.
Our automatic meters have really helped us out, too, because we catch leaks on other people's property.
Well, that's had a huge impact on customers fixing their leaks that they never would have known about or dealt with.
Right.
And if we do have to address an emergency drought situation, I think those automated meters will be a very useful tool to assist with that.
Right. Anything else we need on eight D? We did the ad hoc committee.
I would just ask Dustin, for my part, how much water does southern California get out of the Colorado River now? Do they still get a great deal of it?
Yeah, substantial amount.
But it's way down from what it used to be.
Yeah.
Big time.
And they made a settlement with Arizona, and it was three-state settlement that took them almost thirty years to work out. And California got cut back quite a bit when it was done.
Yeah, they were fine until Arizona started taking their share.
Yeah.
I guess one final comment, and that is, this is kind of a dynamic situation. I don't know that our regular meetings in February, March, April will necessarily get this done. So just be prepared if necessary, you know, we may need to have George or the president call special meetings, just in case.
Okay.
The ad hoc meeting of the government?
Ad hoc?
Some will. Some will, some won't.
Tell them the public find out.
Uh, we'll notice some when the public's invited.
Okay, um, go on, okay, let's do A.D. Extension of Dam Surveillance Agreement. Mr. Barber.
Okay, I brought this on the, the regular agenda to kind of tee you up a little bit. One of the reasons I put this on is in this coming 2014, we expect to wrap up our water rights and complete our water rights EIR. So the next steps, once that's done, is back to water supply projects and evaluating those. And so what that would entail is starting the process of evaluating and reevaluating what we have to date for water supply projects on either new Magalia Reservoir, raising Paradise, et cetera, are the next steps. And so rather than having a three-year dam surveillance agreement with a firm that does that type of evaluation work, I wanted to go to this one-year extension to, to kind of prep us for bringing on a new firm for this analysis, hopefully. But also keeping in mind that we will be dealing with a Prop 218 issue this year relative to the Process Water Recycle Project. So that may be the, the proper opportunity to include the initial analysis of options for water supply, permanent water supply, to be included, that cost to be included in the Prop 218 process. I got a ballpark figure of five to seven hundred thousand dollars to complete our fault study and do an alternative analysis of, we've got five different options for Magalia Reservoir, we've got options for Paradise, bringing the Paradise options that have been looked at in the past, up to date, and then evaluating the options in Magalia for stability, geotechnical analysis, what types of dam structures you build, estimates for you to consider, to try and help fine tune what project we're going forward. It's my opinion, we need that type of document as our next step to try and secure funding federally or at the state level. The, the Water Bond is likely to have funding for local storage projects. And if it were to pass, we could either punt and, and hope to get grant fundings to do this analysis, or we could move forward with the analysis so that we're in a better position to, to take the next steps in a dam. Because, you know, we're talking fifty to a hundred million dollars for a new Magalia Dam. It's, there's just no other way to slice it. Seven to ten years at least for a twenty-six thousand person community to fund a hundred million dollar project, I think we're going to need help from other sources. And so this is just starting to take the next steps to trying to secure that funding. I mean, we are in a unique position with Magalia, that the, the Pines community is definitely exposed to problems with wildfires and escape routes, et cetera. So we would have opportunities not only to get additional storage, but if we partner it up with a four-lane project, we even have a better chance maybe of getting some federal or other funding. So that's why, you know, the only action tonight is, is the dam surveillance agreement, one year. It's right along the same prices they charged us last year. But I really wanted to put it on new business to give you that opportunity to let you know where I'm thinking moving forward, that our next steps are trying to get a good analysis of all of our options and, and narrow it down to a couple.
Would this, uh, report help us with the dam safety, people, by having this report?
This is a requirement of the dam safety.
Of the dam safety.
Yeah, we've been doing it every year for, as long as I've been here, and we usually do a three-year contract with the firms.
So we will be fulfilling the requirement there, so...
Yeah.
And then, and you're right up in the front, it says, Magalia Dam Fault Study and Complete the feasibility study, increased water storage. This would be something basis to help us to go ahead with those studies?
No. What, what I'm doing here is, you are going to be selecting a firm to do those studies. Those studies are likely to be multi-year projects. So the idea is, when you do bring this firm on for a feasibility analysis, you're going to want to have them doing the dam surveillance also going forward, because they're already going to be involved in the project. You're not going to want to deal with two firms in this instance.
So you think we'll, within a year, huh?
Well, we, we likely could be getting things kicked off. They certainly didn't want to lock us into three years with a single firm.
I move to approve the proposal by U.S.R. to extend the current contract for dam surveillance for one year and authorize the general manager to execute the contract extension.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, it should be URS, it's not being...
I was getting ready.
Yeah.
I see U.S.R.
URS, okay, thank you for the correction. Any discussion from the public?
Question?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the opposed? Pass is five oh. Delinquent account policies. You know, after talking about the drought, everything else seems so insignificant.
Yeah, it kind of does, but we got to keep on with our business.
We won't be able to collect money, you know, and all...
Doomsday.
Yeah. This is written for me only because Kevin got the cred in the middle of putting the agenda together, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
Yeah, this is, this is a much-needed policy change. So currently, what has happened is our current policy is not really in the same working fashion. We don't work in the same fashion as the current policy is written. So as I like to remind the board, before we got the automated meter reading system, we were reading meters on a daily basis for twenty days. We were reading half the district, and then the next month, we would read meters every day for twenty days, and we'd read the other half of the district. The district then was billed based on read date. So every time they would read on that day, it would come into the office, the office would process it, and we would send it out. And that would be, the read date would be what you were, were based on. That's when the clock started ticking. The, the clock ticked for fifty days until that fifty days was up, you could pay your bill with no penalty. Once that fifty days was over, expired, you were then charged a ten percent penalty. You could then go another fifty days, I believe, and then you could still be delinquent, you would then be charged another ten percent penalty. And then they would start the shut-off procedures. And so basically, at the end of the day, you could have like a hundred and sixty days of water usage before your meter was shut off. You could run up a pretty good-sized bill. When we got the automated meter reading system in, we started reading all the meters on the same day. We were pulling all the reads on the first. So that meant that all these reads were coming in to these, to the billing person. That billing person then would have to funnel through all those, and we weren't getting the bills, well, we don't get the bills out maybe till the fifteenth. But the policy set, stated that it was on the read date. So that's when the clock started ticking. So really, we were eating up fifteen days of the person's bill. We still gave them fifty days, we felt like that was still reasonable enough to get their bill in. But it was confusing a lot of people, confusing them because they were getting the bill on the seventeenth, but they said that it started on the first, and they just were not understanding. And then it was really hard to kind of put a due date on there, and they could still go another day, another bill cycle before there was a penalty assessed with that. But so this kind of eliminates that old antiquated policy and kind of reinstates a new policy that's more up to date with how we do our business. So to walk you through the new policy, what the, and what the committee has recommended is that...
Here's the next one.
Okay. That all re, all meters will still be read on the first or whenever we pull on the reads. But the bill doesn't, the bill starts when the bill is printed. So that is the bill date. So that will be the date that drives all of the delinquencies, the shut-offs, the penalties, and all of that will be based on when that bill is produced. The, the customer should, should receive that bill within three to four, five days after that bill date has started. And the committee had recommended that they are allowed twenty-five days to pay that, based on that bill date, to get their payment in. The reason behind the twenty-five days is it gives the office a little bit of flexibility on when the next bill is going to be produced. So basically, the penalty will be assessed when the next bill is produced. A lot of times, that's going to be thirty days, thirty-one days, it could be twenty-seven days. It just matters when those bills, when the dates kind of fall on each other.
And weekends and holidays.
Right. Our, our goal is to produce two batches of bills. The best-case scenario would be that the bill, first bill batch would be on the fifteenth, and the next bill batch would be on the twentieth. Therefore, they would have till the fifteenth, if all things worked correctly, to pay their bill on the next one. If they don't pay that bill on the next, on the fifteenth, then there'll be a two percent penalty charged on the balance of that bill. The reason why we want two batches is because it alleviates a lot of the, uh, calls and, and the, the staff from, from pressure of everybody getting their bill at once, and everybody coming in or calling out and, and, and doing that. So it also, when we have shut-offs, it alleviates and splits those shut-off notices and the shut-off procedures into two batches also, and it alleviates some of the stress on the field staff from going out and having to shut off two hundred or three hundred meters or delivering three hundred notices, and, and so on and so forth.
How many a month do you give up?
Uh, the forty-eight-hour notices have been increasing quite a bit, and the shut-off procedure, the shut-offs have been going up, it seems like. So there has been more delinquencies in the past three months. It seems like it's spiking a little bit. And normally, I, I think it's cyclical based on holidays, and people just kind of forgetting about paying their bill.
One of the other benefits to this, too, is that shut-off's going to come much earlier. And so that may seem like a harsher, but in reality, the amount they have to come up with to keep that from getting shut off is going to be much smaller than when it was drug out for so long.
Yeah, and the penalties are going to be less. So before, we were charging a ten percent penalty. The recommendation from the committee is a two percent penalty on the balance. And that would then be compounded, so if they go two months delinquent, the total balance then would be charged another two percent penalty. So...
What happens with these fees? You see, I'm late with my water bill. Twenty-dollar service fee will be assessed if you...
Please go.
Forty-eight-hour notice.
Yeah, I, I'll get to that one sec. Yeah, so basically, what we have is, we have the first twenty-five days, and if you pay your bill within that time period, you're good. You have, then the next bill is generated, and the two percent penalty will be assessed upon that. And then you, if you pay your bill, your bill within that time period, you're good. If you are delinquent on that second bill is when we, is when the shut-off procedure will start. So you, it will be second month delinquent, and you'll have a balance, and then you will be issued a fifteen-day notice. Currently, there is no charge for issuing a fifteen-day notice. The board, or the committee's recommendation is that we actually assess a charge associated with that fifteen-day notice. That charge would then be ten dollars. So the billing clerk would then go through and issue a fifteen-day notice, and that would be sent to the owner through the mail, and a ten-dollar charge would then be assessed on the account. The fifteen-day notice is basically saying you have fifteen days to get your account up to snuff, or you will be shut off. Water will be shut off.
Now, that's the set, how's it, fifteen-day notice after you didn't pay the first bill?
Second bill.
Oh, the second bill.
Second bill, right. Thirteen days after that fifteen-day notice is issued, a forty-eight-hour notice is then delivered to the property. It's hung on the door, the fence, however they can get it on there. And that will then be a twenty-dollar charge, and that's what we currently charge anyway. If we go out and require staff time to go out and actually physically hang that on the door, and that is a forty-eight-hour notice.
What happens with a tenant and a landlord pays the water bill, and it gets behind? I've noticed, we've gone through a couple of meetings talking about that. So the tenant doesn't pay the water bill, but it's going to, he gets a shut-off notice, and the landlord lives out of town somewhere. So wouldn't, would you send the landlord a notice if you have an out of town, out of town address for that property?
The landlord is, is always notified of, or of the bill. The owner is always notified of the bill. So the, the owner can basically not accept a bill. If they want the bill to be sent to the tenant, then it requires a duplicate bill. So it means that we have to produce two bills, because one is always going to the owner, and then the other then would be going to the tenant.
Kevin, I'd say the tenant doesn't know about the bill not being paid.
Okay.
Doesn't know about the notices.
Okay.
And...
Then the tenant would have the ability to come in and pay that balance.
When, when the shut-off notice gets...
When they get the door hanger, that's when the tenant gets to know, I have to pay the water bill, or it's getting shut off.
Yes.
Okay, so that's why you use a door hanger to make sure the tenant gets notified, even if the landlord, the owner of the property, hasn't paid the bill.
That's correct. And in this policy, it does state that we will accept payment from a tenant, because that is kind of a, it's always a gray area, because you have landowners that are saying, don't accept payment from them, because I want to get them out.
Yeah, I know, that's one of the tricks landlords can use that isn't legal.
Yes.
Not legal.
It's not legal.
And so we have, we have stated in here that we will accept payment from tenant, uh, from tenants if that is the case. So, but yes, we'll, yeah, that's basically it.
What would be the smallest turn-off bill?
Um...
Two months.
It'd be...
Dollar-wise. Oh, all those things added together?
No, no. If, if a guy was going to get his water turned off, what would be his...
The small...
Smallest?
Well, it'd be an A-rate customer that's used no water over two months, times two percent compounded twice, plus ten dol, if this is the policy.
I was just wondering if it'd be less than ten dollars?
No.
It wouldn't be?
No, couldn't be.
I was just, I was thinking, it seems like if you charged more than the, the bill, the ten dollars was more than the bill, it'd be usury.
No, it's not.
Service fee on an A, twenty-two dollars.
I, I, it's close, yeah. So it'd be like forty-four, pl-...
Forty-four bucks.
Plus, plus, then you would have, you'd have a ten-dollar charge.
Fourteen-day notice.
Plus a twenty-dollar charge.
Plus two percent.
Plus two percent, so.
Two percent.
Seventy bucks, seventy-five bucks.
That's the drought thing, that's thirty percent you're talking about, on this class A.
Right.
Thirty percent of our customers are...
Are on A rates, yeah.
Which is twenty-two dollars per year, service fee, like, our...
Taxes, the liquid taxes are one...
But, but, uh, not to get off topic, but I do want to remind, the board did put in those escalation of tiers for those A-rate customers, which I do think will help in the drought, so I just wanted to...
You know, I had a lot of people that have...
Three days, but it's still low.
That require the ready...
Only a two percent.
Paying the water.
I, I, I don't, but there's, it seems like there's quite a few, because we, we do see a lot of tenants.
We asked the landlord, we have the landlord, we're very happy about it. But we, we asked the people who really know how to handle business of that type, and they said, you pay the water bill.
Yeah.
And you pay the garbage, and that way you know you're, but I have always had water, you always have garbage here.
Yeah.
And that's what we always did. I, I kind of believe the owner would not want to pay the, at least the water bill.
There's a lot that, that do, that do not pay the water bill. And a lot of it comes back and bite them, because if the tenant moves out, we follow the landowner, we don't follow the tenant. So, um, so fifteen-day notice, ten-dollar charge, forty-eight-hour notice, twenty-dollar charge. And then if they still don't pay the bill, we would go out there and seal the meter, and we would charge the account fifty dollars. If the tenant or a landowner comes in and pays the full amount due, then we would then, during normal business hours, go out and turn the meter on for no charge.
What's the penalty for unsealing a meter? What's the penalty for unsealing a meter?
Well, we used to have one.
No charge.
No, I meant.
Currently.
They, uh, illegally.
There's a meter tampering charge and I believe it's $200, the first.
It's on the fee sheet.
Two of the rates that were in the IPAD.
I just.
Yeah.
All the charges.
Yeah, I just wanted them to look it up for me.
It's down at the bottom, I think.
I think it's like two, two.
There it is. $50 plus repair costs for the first and second subsequent or 250 plus repair costs.
Well, do they have to repair some?
Well, if they.
Usually they break it when they're trying to turn it on.
They don't cut the wire, huh?
Well, they cut the wire and then they, a lot of times they can't get it turned or they screw it up or something like that. So. We do hit them with meter tampering charges every once in a while. We'll find ones that do go out and unseal their meter by themselves and without the.
Page 72, uh, that schedule fees and charges, it was February 1st, '06. And then the president submitted it, 11/20/13. Was that the first time that this was admitted in 13?
Yes.
For '06? So in other words.
Yeah, because a lot of the fees have, or a lot of the penalties are associated with the consumption charge, so that continues to grow. The other ones, we probably would have looked at it sooner than this, but we were in that economic downturn and it, the board wasn't really interested in ramping those up.
So, so to answer your question, there is no meter turn on fee during normal business hours, but there is a $100 fee associated with having somebody from standby coming out to turn the meter on and after hours meter charge. So that's, that's how we've done it in the.
Do you refer meter tampering to the district attorney's office?
No, should we?
Well, it's, it is a crime.
Only if it was drastic.
Yeah.
We've had one where we had to pull the meter because they were tampering with it so much. Um, so what else we need to cover here?
Is, uh, tampering with the firefly or the, is it the firefly?
It's all part of the meter.
That's all, okay, yeah, so that's.
That's meter tampering.
Yeah, okay.
So when we pull a meter, does that mean they just get the water for free? We don't manage?
Yeah, we just put a, we just let them go. Ah, just have all the water you want. We're tired of dealing with you.
I do want to add too, one of the reasons we added the 15 day notice fee, a secondary reason is we now have a rule as of the beginning of last year, all new construction of residences must have fire service for sprinklers. And so we now track all of the homes that have a fire sprinkler system. And so when we send out a 15 day notice to someone that has a fire sprinkler system, we're going to have to send that list every month to the fire marshal. And then if they don't pay up, we'll have to send another list to the fire marshal that there's people on a 48 hour notice because we're not going to be the fire police. That's their job. So when they don't pay their bill, everything's going to get shut off. The fire marshal's noticed, so he can go out and tell them their building is not legal for occupancy because the fire system's off. That's our plan right now.
If the building should have to burn, when we cut the water off, they're not going to back on us. They would back on the primary.
That's.
Exactly.
There's actually.
That's the intent.
Uh, it's called the, uh, fire indemnity. There's a legal provision that a water provider, with one noted exception, cannot be liable for inadequate supply or not providing water to a fire situation.
Well, now you intrigued me. Who's the one?
It's, uh, is it Yorba Linda? It's somewhere in that area. And they didn't, they, it's still in litigation, so it's not finalized. But they were able to get around this exemption, this immunity, um, by claiming an inverse condemnation claim. It was kind of a lawyer's trick.
Yeah.
We usually are. We only like lawyer's tricks on our side.
When we pull them, huh?
Yeah.
So, uh, our, our thought process for implementation is that we would implement this in.
April 1st.
April 1st. We would, uh, oh, they've left. Our PR firm would, uh, put up a very, very nice glossy insert into our bills, notifying our customers that they will be receiving, uh, or just the, how the policy has changed and, uh, that, uh, there'll be a new due date.
And we'd be including all these rates too, wouldn't you think? I mean, that would be.
Right, that there's a new, new.
Would probably be a good place, time to do that.
New rates, uh, and, uh, how the billing has changed in the time periods they have to pay it, what the penalties are if it's unpaid and basically the whole new procedure.
So Kevin, the 2%, that's per month.
That's correct.
Everything else is a one-time charge.
That's correct.
All right.
Yeah.
You may want to add that clarification to the first paragraph. I, I had that question when I read it.
So it should say a penalty of 2% per month.
On delinquent balances.
On delinquent balances.
That could call, good catch. And where were you on that?
Well, you should explain too, that it's been 2% on 2%. It's just not 2% same amount the next time, if you're talking about doing.
Well, if you say two.
Yeah, and putting 2% on the balance.
If you say 2% per month on delinquent balances, when you pass that second month, you now have.
A bigger balance.
A bigger delinquent balance.
It's compounding monthly.
Yeah.
So it's not 24% per year, it's something more than that.
But they never get to a year.
No, because they get turned off.
Well, that's going to go out to the tax roll, right?
Yeah, it goes, it would have to have it happen like the day after we.
Yes.
Played the tax rules, they'd have to be delinquent.
Okay. Any further discussion? Anybody submit public? Did you entertain a motion?
I move to adopt the new policy, 6.5 point 7. Delinquent accounts as presented to, and also to abandon the attached existing policies and to adopt the revised schedule of fees and charges as presented.
That doesn't say per month either.
Effective or amended. I think we did do an amendment in there to the.
1957.
Schedule fees and charges, effective April 1st, 2014.
I'll second it.
When you moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You closed, passes by both.
Did your motion include, like, Destin's suggestion?
Yeah, as amended, he said.
Yeah.
As amended, he said.
With the Destin clause.
Okay, see, chapter 11.
I waited and then you didn't.
Chapter 11, isn't that a bankruptcy?
Yeah.
Bankruptcy or business travel, either one.
Article 11, I prefer.
Oh, okay. This, uh, item was passed by Director Kellogg to be looked at by the Admin and Personnel Committee and they did, and I'll turn it over to them.
Well, you can see the changes. Am I chair of that?
Yes, you are.
Do I am? Any significant notes I wanted to? Okay, so you can see the changes that we, uh, did go through, um, in regard to the travel policy. You know, there were, there were only a few there. Uh, one thing that we did add, uh, because it came up during, during our discussions was on iPad page 76, uh, that, you know, we go to these functions sometimes where we bring our wives, like to the Buke County Special District Association thing or, or if we take a, uh, spouse or, or somebody with us if we're going to a, uh.
Dinner.
Yeah, yeah, any other type of function or, or if we went down to this, uh, Economic Development Forecast meeting, you know. We pay, we can pay the fees ourselves if our spouses or, or significant other wanted to go. Uh, so this is just to clarify, uh, that the district is not going to pay, be responsible for those fees and also that the district will not prepay for those fees and then get a, a refund back from the director, you know, after, after the event is over. It just cleans it up and makes sure that the district is out of that business completely. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if we were ever in it. I guess sometimes we did, uh, when we booked, uh, some of the dinners in advance, we'd pay the, pay both fees in advance and the directors would have to do a reimbursement. But this way there's, there's no confusing paper trail like that.
Well, it, it worked, the way I work is usually I give Georgiana a check before she orders.
Yeah.
So then, so that I pay for it, she doesn't, the district doesn't pay for it.
Right, right. And that way we can still take advantage of lower booked fees instead of paying at the door.
Right.
Uh, one of the recommendations, uh, you know, that, that we came up with or that the, the board actually came up with here, um, uh, well, uh, no, let me, let me get back to this and because I'm a little bit out of whack here. In regard to, uh, continuing on with board members, we put in an area here to provide transparency and to make sure that, that, uh, all of the board and public and everybody else understand who's paying for what. Uh, is that board member shall report to the general manager as soon as possible if they are unable to attend a prepaid meeting in order to attempt to find a replacement. So I think that there's a couple of the board members that are going to the, uh, Buke County.
Economic.
Economic Development, uh, meeting, it's tomorrow, is it tomorrow?
Oh, yeah.
It's tomorrow. I went to it last year, I think Larry went to it last year. I guess four of us attended last year. Uh, I think just two are attending this year. Uh, so if, uh, somebody were to have a, uh, something come up, family needs or they're going to be out of town and now the, the people who, uh, committed to going are not going to be able to make it, they can report back to, uh, George and then we, we can take a, a look at that as a, as the district and decide, well, do we have another staff person that we think would benefit from going to this that we hadn't already, uh, lined up? Or check with the other board members, see if anybody else wants to substitute for that, uh, instead of wasting the money. Another paragraph we added was, uh, board member shall report the reasoning for miss, for missing any prepaid, pre-approved meetings where expenses were incurred at the next regular meeting of the Board of Directors. Uh, the reason for this is once again transparency. We're not here to waste the, uh, the public's money and the board members are going to make a commitment to go to a training seminar in San Diego when we book airfare, uh, and the company prepays that and we prepay the tickets for the, for the meeting down there. And then the board member does not make it, then we want the board member to explain to the rest of the board why that per, why the board member did not make it. And, uh, we added this one after kind of this discussion's going back and forth. Uh, the majority of the board may require reimbursement for expenses incurred by the district. That is if we, we felt that we would give the board the discretion so that if the board is unhappy with a director's attitude, uh, about why they didn't show up, if they're irreverent, flippant, then it just looks like there was no reason for that and it wasted district's money, then this would be a way for the board to.
Did you ever add something?
I can't even, unfortunately, I can't tell you. I don't think so.
Okay.
Do you want to show up for a meeting?
No, that, that. Not show up for a meeting that the, that the board pays for.
Do something, incur a lot of expenses and then they'll pay for it.
It's basically just language to clarify so that, like Ken said, there's transparency in the, where the district's finances are going.
Of course, you know, fortunately, at this point in my time, I've never had that happen. But you wake up in the morning and the guy would get out and of course, the first thing I'd do is go.
Well, with health, with health.
Yeah, that's not excusable. Like I'm going to be, I ask and I, I did, on this one in Sacramento for new board members, I think it's a little program here. And I talked to George afterwards, my wife was supposedly getting out of the hospital after a major foot surgery, but she has postponed that, so I'm, I got going to this. And we passed my ability to do that in the, uh.
Consent calendar.
We're all going.
I, I said, right.
Yeah.
The way we approved it in the consent calendar, we're all going to it.
Yeah, the consent.
Anybody can go that wants to go. Isn't that right?
Yep.
I, I.
The way it's approved, anybody can go that wants to go.
But that, okay. And, uh, the, the last thing on it was that, uh, I think this was at, at Bill's, uh, request is that aside from board members, contract employee, once again in a, in a transparency thing, uh, contract employees of the district shall provide brief reports on meetings attended at the expense of the district of the next regularly scheduled legislative body.
Thank you. Should have been helpful, public reflection.
And I believe that, that was it.
What was the one that was brought up during the meeting?
Having an expense, a detailed expense report.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, who would be covered in the last part of this?
No, no.
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 Well, no, it's a brief report. It's not a expense report.
Well, it's like, we have, we now have the directors reporting back and say, this is the meeting that I went to, this is what we had discussed, I kind of came forward with this, I found these were the points of interest. I'd like to direct the, uh, committee members' report or its representative, the Buke County Special District Association.
But he wanted the details on expenses.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
Oh, and this is where you, you said, bring it up if we so recommend to, uh, change that. We can, we could change the verbiage there.
The reason I asked for the detail instead of just a broad thing across, because I've had people telling me so-and-so went so far, this, that, and so. And they ask people, was there any record or anything? I said, no, that's as far as I'm willing to say.
There's a record. Don't you have a expense report?
Well, it's definitely a record.
Yeah.
The record of it. I don't think we need to make it public. I mean, it is public information, but I don't think we need to bring it to a meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to drag a meeting out with an hours long, you know, well, I.
You can, you can go in there and ask for a copy of the.
And they can too, the.
Anybody can.
Okay, well, it's all, on that, you're asking again, I'll say, go to the office and request it and you should have it, what is it, four days or something?
10 days.
10 days.
10 days, okay.
It won't take that long.
But there's no reason to make a report of it on a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question here. Cause I'm, I'm under 11.8. Breakfast, 15%, what, what do we, the ones that I've worked on before, they've always had kind of the.
One more bet.
11.8.
Where it says, yeah, 11.8.
The IRS per diem percentages.
So we'd have to know what that is.
Yeah, it's a public.
Some places you'd go that you can have a $6 breakfast and you might have to have a $15 breakfast.
Correct. What we, what we do is we do what they call the high-low method.
Okay.
And the high-low method says everything's low except for these select cities. Santa Monica, San Francisco, and then they give you the high method, uh, the high rates for those. So what you do is you take the high rate of what your daily meal allowance is and then you, you divide it by these fif, these percentages. And the reason why is sometimes on the way home, you get home before dinner, you get dinner. So you would only, you wouldn't get that 50%, the full day. So that's why we break it down by that.
You know, I don't.
But keep, keep in mind, that poli, portion of the policy, 11.8 only implies to employees of the district. Board members can only be reimbursed for.
Actual expenses.
Actual expenses with a receipt.
Yeah, with a receipt.
You're not allowed to follow the.
Well, even when I was an employee, what we had to do was trade receipts and I have no problem with that whatsoever.
We don't, we don't require receipts with the meals.
Are we kind of loosely talking about employees of the district? For example, contract employees?
Yeah.
We're employees. We're not elect, not board members.
Yeah, and I, I will tell you that this most likely saves the district money because if you have an opportunity to just get reimbursed for a hotel room that's nearby, you're probably going to pick a different one. And if you get $110 and you can find a $59 rate, employees will take the flat amount instead of going into the $200 hotel because it'll be covered.
You don't require the employees to trade receipts?
Only for actual expenses. If they take per diem, there's no requirement for, for actual receipts.
And do they have a choice?
They do have a choice, yes.
Board members do not have a choice.
Correct. You must do actual.
And they, they, yeah, they definitely have a, a choice because one of the things that is, is really good is that they stay at the. one of the things that is, is really good is that they stay at the hotel, that the conference is being held, which is oftentimes a higher rate, but you're also there for all the interaction with other people instead of being out away from the area.
Let's say if, if a board member would stay at a hotel where the conference was being held,
Yep.
would you turn the receipt?
Yep.
Yeah, board members have to return a receipt in on everything.
Yep. I have no problem with that. Well, I've been with it several times, just looking at past ones that I've been working under and stuff. I thought it was all that. I just didn't quite understand your fifteen percent breakfast and all that. I understand our IRS, but, uh, like in mileage, fifty-six cents now or whatever IRS is.
What happened to mileage? Did it go down?
No, I was looking at the wrong figure.
Oh, were you?
Yeah, I was looking at how many miles I drove rather than...
What is mileage, fifty-six?
It is, yeah.
And what would we have to do if we were doing that, just turn in our mileage?
Yeah.
An expense report.
Yeah, we got an expense form, so like when you go down tomorrow to Oroville, that's one you can get reimbursed for.
Perfect.
Now, with IRS, if you don't spend the night, you can't get the meals.
Same way, it's the same way. You, if you're, it's not an overnight, you don't get the meal and you don't get a lunch. You don't get any...
So you wouldn't get a meal on the way home from IRS.
But you still get...
You get mileage, yeah, but you don't, if it's not an overnight stay, you do not get meal reimbursement.
Most of these kind of conferences that I'm sure that I'm going to be going to in Sacramento, lunch is provided.
That's how a lot of them are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that one.
I'm not sure either. But say like, say if I had to be there at eight o'clock in the morning.
Mm-hmm. If you're gonna be in Sacramento at eight o'clock for a meeting, then you can go the day before and stay in a hotel because you're paying someone to actually get an education. You don't want them having to get up at four in the morning to get there and then sleep through half the day.
Or crash on the way.
Yeah, or crash on the way.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the changes to the PID Rules and Regulations, Chapter 11, Business Travel Policy as Proposed. I don't think we made any amendments.
Seconded, moved and seconded and further discussion? All those in favor, voting from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Pass is five oh. Yay, policy of district-owned roads. Hello, is the one who put that on there, so I'll turn that over to him.
I think we all wanted that on there. I say, I think we all kinda wanted this on there.
Yeah, I, I thought what we ran into, and George was nice enough to put the minutes in for, to remind us what happened in the special meeting. Any rate, the, these are, these are thoughts, they're not, uh, it's not a, in other words, a motion would be to invest in this or go into inventory of roads, location conditions, may change in disagreements of anyhow on paid or not paid. Part of this would be, as Lenny pointed out, that part of one road that we own part of, the town is paving it and maintaining. The other thing would be, uh, that's actually came up in discussion. Then, uh, the other thing would be, are, are these roads, some of these roads may have value. In other words, people may not know who owns them or whatever, or has the right-of-way, whatever you wanna say. And they might be able to be sold or turned into some sort of money, or turned over to the town for maintenance in some sort of agreement. But the map that George produced that night was a nice map, but it didn't list where the roads were and what they are. And, and that's what the inventory is about. Other words, this is a, this is not something that would happen right away, it would be done over time. And are there any funds for these roads in our present budget? I think the answer there is no. What is our liability if someone's injured, delayed emergency care, poorly maintained roads? We went over that, we can pretty well skip out of that probably, according to Dustin, but maybe one of those tricky attorneys can figure a way around it.
I don't think so.
Yeah, easements and easement.
And who is maintaining each road? This would be part of this inventory, simply to know where we're at.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. Say, who is maintaining, I mean, which of the individual parties who live along the road?
Yes, because some of them have, have, supposedly have to maintain it, others don't have any kind of agreement like that. So it would make, if somebody came and complained and we had the information, we'd be able to answer them and say, "No, we can't do anything with you because this, this, this is going on and that."
If I could, if I could ask Dustin a question real quick while you're, while you're right there, because isn't the granting of an easement automatically put those people in the maintenance category? They are responsible for that. Do they have to have something in writing?
No, and remember, there's a lot of, this is really factual, ba, factually based. Um, the Mrs. Kay, her situation, I was very confident, you know, we don't have any maintenance obligation, we don't have any liability. Uh, very confident there. There may be another situation, uh, somewhere else where the district has a tank at the end of the road and we use that road. That would be a different analysis.
What's that?
I would say, well, first of all, we're probably maintaining the road under that factual scenario, if we use it, would be my guess. But, but even if we weren't, then I would say, yeah, we probably do have some responsibility to maintain that road since we're using it for district purposes. Maybe not a hundred percent, but maybe in some proportion with the other landowners. Um, so that, that's kind of the problem, uh, I don't know if it's a problem, or, or maybe just it's not really feasible to have a policy that's one-size-fits-all.
No, I don't think there is. I think you, you have to do the inventory and find out what we have in, in the district and, and what doing that's actually... And then as far as a policy would be down the road, because once you had inventory and knew what you had exactly, and then you can go back and figure it out because you can, is it, you know, like, we don't know whether the town is maintaining any of these roads or not, or who is or not, and just like Dustin says, there are exceptions. Um, and as far as a, a fund collected from customers for road work, probably that isn't feasible. But this is the way my mind works, okay? I went through a list of things and just kept putting ideas up. Action to appoint an ad hoc committee or place with standing committee to look and working with our staff. Uh, I don't know, I don't think we have such a committee standing, maybe it can be slid in somewhere, I don't know. Once this is done, we will have guidelines and policies. See, once the inventory is done, we have the information, then we can come up with some sort of guidelines and policy. Then when customers come in with an issue, maybe it can be stopped before it ever gets to the board and you can say, "Okay, in your situation, this is what we can or can't do." It's not, and in a way it helps our community. We've got a lot of unapproved roads in town that are just rocks and what have you. And I have no idea, I don't, hopefully the staff knows where our roads are and what condition they're in. That's, that's...
You know, I, I have a, an idea. This is just an assumption, but when, when the town incorporated, I got to assume that there, that was a matter that was looked at pretty closely. Because the town needed to know what was its responsibility, what the county was transferring to the town, what became the town's responsibility. So that work may...
I can tell you that the town, we know what roads the town owns. There is miles and miles and miles of roads that the town says, "We don't own and we don't maintain." And there's tons of places where we go do a pipeline, we don't have to ask the town's permission, 'cause they don't own that road. They don't want the responsibility of maintenance or anything. And there's tons of those all over this community. The town is not gonna take responsibility for anything than what they absolutely need to.
You get the town to take the responsibility, I'm just trying to remark district.
Sorry. This reminds me of the argument that the town, I was on the town's side, and PID had the argument about who owns the fire hydrants. We had the same problem. Town said that PID owned the fire hydrants, and the PID said, "No, the town owns the fire hydrants." 'Cause they, they have the fire department and they have to maintain them. So what we did is we set up a, a fund to collect money to do it. We didn't care who owned it or anything, 'cause they, half of them weren't working. And because, but we neither one entity ever admitted that they owned the fire hydrants. So right now they're all working, but nobody owns them legally.
That was... That was before Prop 218. We now have new rules. You can't, unfortunately, that's no longer an option.
Yeah, I know, you can't do it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you can't take, you can't collect money from people to do that. It's, it's illegal now. But this was done in nineteen ninety-one. And it's worked pretty good, but that's why they made, that's why they made it out, they outwrought it, 'cause it was working too good. But I don't, I think, I think this is a big can of worms and I don't wanna know what roads I own, or, uh, we own or we don't own, and the town doesn't wanna know either. I was, well, I was told when I moved up here, "Do not ever buy a house on a private road."
Yep.
If you do, you're in trouble.
You're lending on it.
What's that?
You should not, unless you own the whole road, you, you should not be able to get lending on it.
You can lend on it as long as there's road maintenance agreement.
If there's a maintenance, yeah. But I was, that's what I was...
Then you have a right-of-way.
It's just, it's a, it's a big can of worms. And I think us spending any money on doing anything in inventorying this is, is a waste of our, of our consumers' money.
Well, I, I kinda thought that we should go out and find out and get a big list of the roads that we own, identify the property parcels that border them and have that information. So if they come in to, you know, express a complaint or so on and so forth, we already know and have the information easily at hand to tell them that they, and, and, and we will know whether we own the road and have granted them a, a right-of-way and they, they own the right-of-way, or whether we do not own the road and somebody else owns it and we just have a right-of-way, so it's clear cut. And, and we just tell them that, you know, explain to them and, uh, further, that if they own the right-of-way, if they're the ones, excuse me, not own the right-of-way, if they have an easement, if they own the easement, then it's their responsibility for maintenance. Uh, and furthermore, I, I would think that, uh, you know, it would be nice if this could be, uh, recorded on each deed.
So I was just saying, you wanna have their easement maintenance sign-up sheet ready to go when they come in with their complaint?
Well, uh, if we were to send out letters to all of the owners of those properties now and just bring it to their attention and say, "You're the property owner, you're on a road, it's, it's a private road, it's owned by PID. You've been granted an easement, just to make sure you understand, you have the responsibility to maintain this road, PID does not." And then my idea would be to maybe once every year, we just mail letters back out to the current owners of those properties and just keep them always apprised that they own the responsibility of maintaining their road. So after four or five years of receiving those letters, nobody's gonna be surprised.
Uh, Lashco just spent eighteen thousand dollars on locating sixty-two legal lots in Chico to find out which were hooked up to the sewers. I mean, they're not in Chico, they're in the county, that are hooked up to Chico lots. They spent seventeen thousand and the city spent seventeen thousand. So you're, you're not talking peanuts.
It's a, it's a, it's a giant paper search.
I would say we're gonna spend hundreds, hundreds of hours of staff time working on this, even inventorying it.
Yeah.
We've, I showed you the map, that's our best guess. If we sent letters out every year, my concern is, what about the ones we missed?
Would that generate...
With that generally, them saying, "Well, you never sent me a letter." Secondly, I would like to propose a policy that says PID owns no roads. We own land that roads may be on, and we have no liability for maintenance of those roads. I think that would end it and take care of everything, because we could have a whole inventory of all these roads. There'd be one road, maybe two that we use to access a tank. We already know we drive there every day and we maintain those roads. We throw gravel on it sometimes, we don't make it crystal clear, but the ones we use every day, we help the neighbors take care of. The rest, we don't want any responsibility for, we don't want anything to do with it. And that should be our answer, a simple answer to every person that comes to the, the counter.
And by, and by searching out the, all these properties, if we did go search out all these properties, aren't we asking everybody in the district that's not on a private road to spend their money on searching out who's responsible for looking? Don't we have a problem with that, Dustin? And just saying, "Hey, we're gonna spend your money to search out who lives on a private road that we might own. We don't know, but we're just gonna go ahead and spend some time and money looking for it."
I mean, the...
So we can send them a notice to say, "We're not gonna maintain it."
The, the bigger problem I see is the, the, the notice doesn't really give you any legal benefit. I mean, we're either gonna have some road maintenance responsibility or we're not. In most cases, it's gonna be not. It's gonna be the Mrs. Kay situation where we may own the land, but we have no use for a road. We don't need a road to maintain a water line underground. So, doesn't go to a tank.
Yeah.
So that, in, in the substantial majority of cases, that's gonna be the answer, I think. No maintenance obligation, no legal liability, and sorry.
And we never built roads in the first place.
Is that doable? I'm sure you guys have considered something.
You know, kinda what, what I was thinking is, is how many, who's the longest-serving board member? Is it you, Bill?
Larry.
Larry? I mean, how many times has a road issue come before?
The first time, I never...
It's the first time.
I didn't know we owned roads. And then it turns out we don't. Granted easements. We own land.
We own land, we don't own any roads.
That was tricky.
That, that tells me it's not a burning issue from the community. I, I guess it could turn into one, but, you know, I don't like to create policies just to create them. That, that's kinda my one caution. If it becomes a, an issue where we're getting this on a regular basis, then yeah, maybe we could adopt a policy. Maybe we understand the problem a little better, but I don't, I wouldn't recommend just adopting policies just to address it.
You wouldn't recommend his policy?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, in my mind, you need a policy to address problems, and I don't think, how long have you been on the board?
Twelve years.
An issue that comes up once every twelve years is something that deserves...
Yeah, there was only one other one and it wasn't even them looking for maintenance.
Well, there's probably been some that have come to the office and you can get to the board.
They were complaining, it got to the board. They were complaining because of the way the neighbor put a fence further out into the easement than they should've and they wanted us to be the easement police.
Oh, oh, oh. But they weren't looking for us.
On the flip side of not recommending spending time making policy, we should not be spending any time researching if we own this, time and money researching this?
Well, that's a board call, but I would just say, it doesn't really give you any legal benefit. If we give them a notice or not, if we inventory the roads or not, I don't think it makes a difference in the analysis.
When issues come up, research it at that time.
Yeah, the issue comes up, I would say, do we use the road? In most cases, no. So that would tell us we don't have any maintenance obligation. And the second aspect is, do we have any legal liability if we refuse to maintain it? And again, it's almost always gonna be a no answer for me. It's hard for me to even imagine a scenario where we would be...
Especially with the documentation introduced last time.
Yeah.
Where we don't have the liability.
Yeah. That, that is black letter law. The owner of an easement, meaning the folks that use the right-of-way, uh, they are responsible for maintenance. And if the district doesn't need a road there, they just happen to have a pipeline underground, we're not using the road, we don't need a road.
So we don't have a pipeline under roads.
We had to tear up road to fix the pipeline.
We have pipelines on our property.
Yeah.
That's our, that's the total of our responsibility.
Yeah, and, and that, um, we would repair it probably to a better condition or a light condition, would be my guess.
Mainly to protect our vehicle.
Yeah.
Well, then I'm gonna make a motion that we do not adopt any policy for district-owned roads and, um...
District-owned land.
District-owned, well, he's got district-owned roads. District-owned, well, he's got district-owned roads.
You don't have to make a motion. If nobody makes a motion, it isn't safe. This thing dies.
Dies. Okay, then, okay, then we won't.
Let's let it die.
Okay.
Okay. I have to take.
I like that solution better.
Just for clarification, um, I own, I own a property that has PID easements. Other people, I have people out back that use that road. I never, ever assumed, I've owned it since seventy-one. Never, ever assumed that PID had any responsibility on that road. Other than it's got a six inch pipe on it. If you guys dig it up, you're gonna, you're gonna repair my road, right?
That's the, our easement.
Yeah, that's our normal practice.
Thank you, no?
No, thank you.
Yeah.
It was too big. I don't want to, I don't want to look at it.
I'd use this scenario if I owned a piece of desert and you decide to build a road across it, don't come back ten years later and say, how come you haven't been taking care of my road?
No, I never ever thought that PID had to do a thing for another minute. If they dig it up, then all that's.
Night, Ward.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quick boys, we might get out of here.
It's going to be a million dollars, I bet.
Okay, we coming back?
It's going to be such a spread.
We're going to go to treasurer's memo.
But I'll have that to you. I'll make, our auditor should be done by tomorrow. Oh, you already sent me? Sorry. Um, you have my written memo. Um, you should have a full report next month. It's just that when the fifth, when the board meeting falls on the earliest Wednesday, it's hard to get the information and calculate it out so you can have a full, um, full report. But currently our cash position is at four point nine. It's actually, has not changed much from last month. It's gone up a little bit. Um, we are currently have paid eight hundred thousand of debt service. And our operations are actually, um, from a consumption standpoint, I was looking at the billing report from last month. Uh, I believe, I just want all this flipped to it real quick because it's something I like to point out. From December of last year to December of this year, if you look at the consumption water used numbers, fifteen point eight million. And from last year it was nine point, or almost ten million. So we have quite a bit of more consumption from one month to the next. And then you can look at the consumption bill.
Well, that's because it's so dry.
Yes.
In January it'll be even higher because lots of people got their sprinklers going. We, one thing I forgot to report and maybe back in September, I had them turn on the D-tank well during off peak energy hours so that, you know, we, we knew the reservoirs were low, so we can kind of get ahead of this. And so that's been running since then. Our treatment plant's been running three and a half to sometimes four million gallons a day, plus the D-tank well, which is, I think a half million gallon a day, something like that. And we're normally two, seven to three in the winter. So.
So we.
It's happening.
We shall, we should, we will see a consumption increase in the revenue over the.
Well, it's interesting is that about a week ago, the news came out and said, you better start watering out, outside because it's so dry. And then, then a week later they say, oh, we're in a drought. Don't water outside.
So, um, we, we've seen it. We've actually seen a bump from last year was an increase. And then again, I think this year will be an increase. Um, and with a rate increase on top of that, we should, we should see a nice revenue increase. So last, last year, the last, our auditors are here this, uh, this, um, this week also. So they're, they've been here from Monday and I probably will finish up tomorrow. Everything seems to be going very smoothly and clean. Um, Larry met with the principal of the firm.
I told them, they asked me who the, who the troublemakers were on the board.
Uh-oh.
And I, and I said, well, I said, I said, uh, I'm probably one of them. I said, well, we read the minutes. And I said, well, then I don't have to tell you anything.
Yeah. Yeah, they, uh, so they're, they're going through and our consumption revenue from past fiscal year to this fiscal year that they're auditing increased actually twenty-one percent. Um, part, part of that is a increase in, in the rates, but the majority of that is an increase in the consumption portion. So, um, but.
If you go back two summers ago, we had a very mild summer. And then we jumped this year to a more normal summer.
Yeah. Um, so the large projects are still in progress, which is the corporation yard, the water rights application, um, and the process water recycle project. Um, we have the state fund, state revolving fund applications are in pro, process. I don't know if we've heard anything back on them since they've been in process. But there's one that's for the water recycle project and then the other one is for the B-reservoir expansion. Um, I put in there again, our remaining contracts and what's open. Um, hopefully the, the Lee and Rowe is coming to its, I don't, I don't know. I'm sure they're going to bill us this month, but they.
They had about twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Maybe fifteen thousand left on their, what their contract is approved for at this point.
And so they're going to have to do some type of changeover of information from one. Yeah, they're going to have to do some changeover of information to make sure that they get their other principals up to speed.
Instead of forty-two, it's like fifty.
Yeah, because they have billed, uh, this is as of December thirty-first. So, um. I also attended a conference. Actually, I went down the day of the board meeting last, last month. The total cost was eleven, about eleven hundred dollars. It was on government tax update, which is something I go to every year. A lot of it covered the Obamacare, what the requirements are for districts or for companies that are not offering the Obamacare or offering health insurance, what the poverty rate is associated with, uh, people that are going to the exchange and getting the, uh, health insurance. Um, and then for us, what one of the big things is looking at is the Cadillac plans. Um, and if you offer the Cadillac plan, what kind of penalties are going to be associated with that Cadillac plan? And I believe those penalties are starting in two thousand and eighteen, if I remember correct. Um, a lot of it is employee versus contract or, uh, independent contractor. Um, and the pitfalls when it comes to that, if you have an independent contractor and he is deemed an employee, that's very, very, very expensive for a district like us because of the benefits we offer our employees.
And you owe back benefits.
And you owe back benefits. Yeah. Um, so that's something that they're always looking into. Uh, new, whatever new legislation, maybe new, new, um, lawsuits that have come out and what, what kind of precedences were set on all of that. Um, retirement plan changes, if there was any retirement plan changes. So it's, it's a very good conference. It always gives me good updates. Um, and so I kind of bring those back to the district. Also met.
My seminar said that all employers are supposed to give their employees some type of insurance card by year end.
Nothing left in this jar by the time I'm done.
An insurance card? They're, they're supposed to be notified of what's the, what was, we, and we offered that notification. Yeah. Um, no, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that other than that we do have to report on their W2s what the health insurance cost was.
You know why?
It's for the.
Cause the government doesn't know what health insurance costs and that's how they're going to find out.
Right. And that's how they're going to find out what the cost of a Cadillac plan is too. Um. The other thing too, as I met with our, I always, every time I'm down there, I meet with Brandis, uh, Rick Brandis, just to go over what the bond market's doing. Uh, what kind of options we have available to us, um, what he's seeing out there and where the, where the prices are. And still historically low when it comes to interest rates for, for issuance. Um, and you know, if something does come up where we need to do some bridge financing for this process recycle project or something like that, then obviously he'll be available for us. And we constantly are updating him on our financials. So he knows what we're looking at when it comes to debt covenants and different things like that. So. It's always a good thing. A lot of times something, something good comes out of it. So. Um, if there's any questions, I'll take them in now or move on to the checks.
Any questions? Nope. No?
I'm going to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
Memo.
Memo.
Treasurer's memo?
You're right.
As presented.
Second.
I thought it was on memo.
It's a memo. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any notes?
It was close.
Wait in there for a second, huh?
It was a close one.
Item.
Approval of December checks.
I do apologize. I put the wrong header on the top of the original one. That said description slash payable, not description parentheses item. So some of the descriptions were a little bit vague. Um, but I did replace it and I know George Anderson had a, a new copy. So if it, I think if you downloaded the agenda.
I downloaded the second one.
Yeah, then, then you have, you have the updated one.
I've got the old.
You have the old one.
Well, I got both.
He's the one that caught it.
I know.
Okay, uh, Sepp, you got anything to?
I do.
Any questions?
One of the things was I noticed there wasn't much description on anything. Since I got that, uh, since I got that email today, um.
And that was good. You caught it, Kevin.
Good job, Ken.
iPad page ninety-three. Norman Madsen, remind me what they do.
They are the person who owns our corporation shop or our corporation, old corporation yard.
It was like so familiar.
Rent, yep.
I was trying to block. Um, I think the one on ninety-four was notice the PG&E bill, but don't have locations listed on there. You just explained that. Ninety-five was, uh, Stanley Convergent Security Solutions. And even though it's not that much, what are they? Stanley Convergent?
I think that's our, is our, they run our, they, uh, monitor our alarms for like our tanks and our, um.
Yeah.
Okay.
Freedom Plant, B-res.
I just didn't notice. Maybe you've.
We don't use them for the office, but the office, Eagle Security does the office, but they don't do like the same type of thing.
Maybe you've listed, maybe you've put more of a description on their name or something like that, or I don't know.
We need to remember to cancel them at the shop.
And that.
Yeah, I think they do.
My friends.
Is it?
Covers me.
Okay. Ken?
Page eighty-nine, Cedar Creek Publishing. Is that our annual water report that we send out? The sixty, sixty-four hundred dollars. Says water education, conservation.
What page?
Eighty-nine. iPad. Eighty-nine, eight-nine. Cedar Creek Publishing.
No, that, the, the, that was a catch-up because they billed us and the check went out and they never got it. So they did a catch-up bill. I think the biggest one is the, um, report that they finalized for us finally. And the other one, I'm not sure, the eighteen hundred, could have been a couple. I'm not, I don't know how, what that is. I mean, they've been doing all our newsletters.
Okay, so it's kind of a catch-up stuff with all their bills for the various things, items they've been doing. Uh, the Norman Madsen, we're going to be out of there by February twenty-eighth.
Yes.
Is that the deal? Then we'll stop paying rent and?
He, um, he was having us pay quarterly. He wouldn't go to monthly. So we had to pay each quarter until we were out of there.
So is it February or March?
It's February.
We're definitely going to get out at the end of the quarter.
Oh, yeah. We're, we're out of there essentially now, except for the generator, I think.
Hmm. Um, Sierra Tree Care, what's a seven, uh, excuse me, page ninety-five. Is for the construction over here. What, what is that seventy-two hundred dollar bill?
Um, if you notice, they pulled some trees down that were diseased. In fact, the board approved that. We had beetles in some of the trees.
Two months ago or so?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Yeah. So they took like four or five trees down right along the property line between the new shop and the residences up front. Plus that old, um, pine that was kind of sticking out all by itself. That one was potentially threatened too. They took that one out. They had to bring a crane in and they did a good job.
Expensive stuff to take those trees down.
Yeah, it is. They won't let you cut them down to begin with because that's clear cutting.
Uh, and I, I asked earlier what the consortium fee was. I thought that might have been some type of party.
What is it? Sixty-five dollars?
Consortium fees, we, we are required for all of our Class A driver's license held positions, which is all of our utility workers in you, in this group to drug test. And you have very specific rules about the drug, drug testing, about percentage of employees each month or quarter gets tested, what, um, what they're tested for and tracking all that information. So we are in a consortium where we're grouped in with multiple employers and they allow that. So we, we get random polled with lots of other employers and we're all in this one group. So we're, we don't have to hit our people as often and pay the fee for testing each time.
Do anybody come, come to work drunk?
Well, they do, uh, they do alcohol and they do other drugs.
Oh, they don't do alcohol?
They do do alcohol. Occasionally. It's a hit or miss. That one's a, you know, everything's random, even what they test for.
That's all out of the computer?
Yes.
Do they notify you here in the morning? And if they're not there by four o'clock in the afternoon, it's a positive test. As far as they're concerned. Dot program.
It's a.
Well, yeah. I mean, there, there's a whole set of rules.
You don't show up?
It's more refusal. If they're here, they have.
I think when, if I used to have to do this, uh, if you, you know, if we didn't get there by four o'clock, we had to go to work. They consider it a positive.
Yeah, we do a mobile. So.
We do?
The lab guy comes here. So when we have our numbers pulled, he's here first thing in the morning and those guys get pulled away. So. It's not a matter of having, whether they show up or not, or waiting it out or giving themselves a little time. They're just pulled and tested right then.
Kind of ensures the.
That's it for me.
The good boy policy or good girl policy.
I just have one on page ninety-four.
Ninety-four?
Okay. Pittney Bowes, Global Financial Services. There's two bills paid within three days for the identical amount, one thousand sixty-eight and ninety-four cents. One of them had a credit against it, but I was sort of curious what meter stories we need. We have two meters or something?
We buy post, we buy postage.
No, but three days apart.
That's probably when the bill was generated more than when it was filled.
I think what happened was they, uh, they paid the wrong vendor on that one. So they had to avoid that check and then reissue a check.
Did they void one of the checks here?
Yeah.
It doesn't say anything about voiding anything. There's a credit balance and it's eight oh three. And that one wasn't saying nothing.
Yeah. I think that's what happened on that one. Cause it's to the same vendor.
Oh, two different vendors.
Yeah, but they're the same. I mean.
Two different vendors.
But one's not a credit.
For just power and financial services.
Credits here.
Is financial services, do you buy stamps from financial services?
No. Pittney Bowes is, uh, basically they, they are, they, we rent our, uh, meter, postage meter from them. And so, and then we pay them to refill the postage meter on that, on that meter itself. So you pay them and they download postage, uh, credits into that meter. And then that's what we use to, to run our meters through or our postage through.
Okay. I just wondered, three days apart, couldn't imagine you going through that.
Now, and most of our postage now is paid to, um.
Infocent?
Infocent. Yeah. Thank you. So we, we give a deposit to Infocent and Infocent then runs the postage through them. This is all in-house.
Yes, I have one on, a couple of, um, eighty-eight, start with eighty-eight. Eighty-eight. And I'm just curious, this is sixty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-one and it's for health. Is that what our monthly health fee is for, that's everything?
Employings, health benefits.
Yep. It's about that every, every single month.
I know I didn't give one on my dental, but you're, we don't issue our people a card.
No. It's all, it's all social security.
Health, they don't give a card?
Yeah, health, you get a card.
Because you know, every time I go to the doctor, sometime I have a study sprint, they make a copy of my.
Yes, we have health cards, just not dental.
Oh, just not.
Or vision.
Vision. I was just saying the BSP doesn't have it either.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's approximately what it is on a monthly basis. That's sixty-three.
That's correct.
Isn't that a Whopper? Isn't that a Whopper?
That's a Whopper, yeah.
Is it possible monthly?
That's divided by... I do have a few more, Larry.
Okay.
One of them is, just trying to get more of a handle on these things. On retirement, it starts on page ninety, number ninety-one, thirty-one thousand. Is that the monthly retirement match?
That's the total retirement that's paid.
Is that what the employee pays him?
Yes. That's, that's two pay, that's two pay periods. So sometimes that'll be three pay periods.
Is that three pay periods?
No, that, that's two, but sometimes it'll be three. Twice a year, we have three pay periods.
Thirty-one would be what you're paying the people that invest our, the retirement.
Correct.
Yeah, and the employees, three percent, or whatever they're paying in the...
It's also in that thirty-one thousand.
There was one here that I had, Mark, and I didn't get it. It has conservation education. I think there was three, three on it.
That was that...
That's what Cedar Creek bills that, yeah.
That's our PR person.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't realize, Cedar Creek was, I thought, underneath us, but that's fine. Cedar Creek is going to be doing quite a bit on this irrigation workshop. Yeah, that's, they're gonna really help make a success, before and after. And Lord is gonna be taking the video of the pre-plating, and the day itself, and then we're going, Bucolik is gonna edit it for us. So with that, tee-pot. That's all I have, Larry.
I only had one, and he got it, so I have none. I'd entertain a motion?
Oh, we gotta read that one.
Yeah, you made it, you have to read it.
I will be approved. General fund check numbers, four, five, seven, six, three through four, five, eight, seven, nine, for the month of December two thousand thirteen, totaling five hundred eighteen thousand fifty-one dollars and seven cents. Exclusive avoided check numbers, four, five, seven, nine, four, four, five, eight, zero, three, four, five, eight, five, three, and four, five, eight, six, two. And authorize a similar amount, allowing or adjusting for extraordinary budget or board-approved items during the month of January.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Director's comments. Start with Doug.
No comments. Very pleased with the nice meeting. Let's hope it starts to rain, like everybody else. But I got an idea. If it doesn't, paradise might not be in as bad a shape as a lot of places.
Well, we're not as bad as...
Because, you know, the land I was talking about, they're gonna be falling down in the valley. Oh, God, that's gonna hit the economy like you can't believe. Or just gonna devastate you.
I think you did an excellent job tonight, Larry. It's not quite ten o'clock. But I still, keeps coming back to my mind, I've been up since five-thirty this morning, I was stopped at four. Maybe we should consider two meetings a month. We're gonna have a special meeting tomorrow anyhow, but something like that, to bring up some of the more, like, the water treatment thing or something else. Maybe we could actually get meetings within three hours, and it wouldn't be so much wear and tear. We might actually be more alert as members of the board.
See, that wasn't the only reason we went to one meeting. It also takes a lot of staff time to do two meetings. So that isn't the only reason. If it was the only reason, we'd have to...
I have no comments.
No comment. Sepp?
I just wanted to say, I hope, very good meeting, Larry. I know Bill was wishing I was still back up there, but it was a great meeting. I, I, I hope that the recycle thing that we did down at Ace, I hope that went good. I mean, I want, I'm really interested in seeing the number there that we got from that. And to tell your friends to make sure to take the recyclables down and donate them in there. It didn't look like they were doing too much, so I threw an extra twenty, and said, "Jim, put that in the fund too," you know, in there, so. But if it did do good, then maybe we should do another one, you know? We're getting close to Kids Fishing Day, so it's probably not, can't do it before Kids Fishing Day, but get another one in there right after about the Fourth of July or so.
Or we might have it at our open house.
When people have plenty of recyclables, great, you know, another good idea.
At the open house, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Something like that, so. So I hope that went well, because that Kids Fishing Day is approaching quickly. April will be here before we know it, so.
There's gonna be a lot of shoreline to fish.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, apparently, you'll be able just to walk out and pick one up.
Oh, you can sit on a stump.
Exactly, yeah. You'll be able to walk out and just, you know, snag one right there, so. Yeah, hopefully, we get some water. We talked about an Indian rain dance at the water conservation, and it, it rained two days, three days after that, so. You guys better...
We'll do a shower.
I...
Do whatever it takes.
I would like to say something.
You would?
Oh, I prompted a comment, oh, God.
It is tough, the first time I was walking there.
I prompted it, something.
I was trying to think of this, actually, and I forgot about it. That's why I was hesitating. Do I, what was that thing I was gonna talk about? I, I think I told George about it. Chamber of Commerce got a telephone call from a citizen who wanted to know if the chamber could contact Indian rain dancers and get them up here to dance and get some rain. And of course, the Chamber of Commerce referred that person to the PID.
They did? Oh, really? I'll get my rain sticks out. I've got a couple of rain sticks.
So I'm not sure if we're quite that desperate, but...
Well, they said, isn't the Pope calling for prayers for rain? The Catholic Church? That's what I heard. Did you laugh at it?
The whole world fled.
Yeah. Okay, I, my comments, I think I made all of mine during the meeting, so we are now...
I actually thought Ken's comment was gonna be about my fantastic putting that he saw the other night when I picked up a putter and knocked it against the wall.
Oh, you were putting?
Karen?
This is, I'm late, we're getting out early?
Ten o'clock.